Council will call this meeting order for the record. It is October twenty first, twenty twenty five at four thirty P M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Little Roberts,
Here.
Councilman Taylor, Councilman Overton, Councilman Whitlock,
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time up is adoption of the agenda.
Yeah.
Councilman Cavanagh.
We adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
Motion second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is agreed to. Next up is consent agenda.
Yeah.
Councilman Cavanagh.
We approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item nine, which is fiscal year twenty twenty six budget amendment in the amount of one hundred eighty two thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars. And this will be presented by Ms. Barney. Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I stand before you with the budget amendment we discussed last week. I did only bring forward the deficit on Q two. The remaining deficit will be back in front of you once we get the final numbers for our Q three and again likely for our Q four. But the remaining deficit for Q two was one hundred and eighty two thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars. So I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks for bringing this. I like, at least we're on a cadence of seeing you guys at least every quarter, whether it's for a deficit request or just to keep us updated as how things are progressing with the trust. So, that, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the budget amendment in the amount of one hundred eighty two thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars to fund the Employee Benefits Trust.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve item nine. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, could call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Cavanagh,
Aye.
Little Roberts,
Aye.
Taylor,
Aye.
Overton, Whitlock.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and am agreed to. Thank you. Next time up is fiscal year twenty twenty six fee update. Next steps, turn this over to Mr. Lavoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're here as a follow up to the previous presentation we did a few weeks ago. We opened it up for communications between the two branches. We sent out a request for information. We provided the context of the request again, I think on the thirteenth for this meeting today. So we stand here for any discussions that you have. Hopefully, we can answer it for you today. And we are looking for action on this item as it was presented last month to approve the fees as it presented. So we stand or sit for any discussions or questions that you may have from the meeting last month in continuation of that discussion.
Council, I wasn't here for that conversation, but just here to see if, yes, do we have any additional thoughts? Are we prepared to bring forward a resolution for consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
For thoughts, my opinion hasn't changed. I'm not supportive of what's being presented before us. We're gonna be subject, you know, providing some subjectivity about when we're gonna collect these fees and how much to have in here, you know, a twenty seven hundred percent increase to me does not make a lot of sense. So if this is what's being proposed, I will not be in favor of it. And would encourage staff to go back and bring us back a revised recommendation that would allow for a slower increase of these fees, seeing how we have not kept up with the pace of what we've communicated to the public we'd be doing. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Let's have a quick question. I missed the meeting, but watched, watched it, but I had a couple of questions. A lot of the fees that increased the most were kind of tied into the community development and planning departments. That's where some of the biggest fees were. This year, we had a, we were in the red there, but I know that users kind of, and the, the income that we derive by the staffing that's required to process application fees, et cetera, kind of fluctuates. I'm just kind of curious, when you were doing the full cost recovery model, did you, are some of these big spikes in the fees as a result of we've had less activity, therefore we kind of are running in the red? Or is this reflecting just the work that's needed to process those fees?
Mr. Taylor, the fees that you see are based on what inputs we got back from the departments on the actual time and, I guess, materials it takes to process each transaction. So the number of transactions per se do not come into play. We are asking, how many times does it take to do this? Okay, and then we record that. So in that way, when somebody asks to do that, we can tell the user it costs us this much to do that every time. We don't do a, on average, it's cost this or this on some, on those particular fees. There are some fees that we will use. How many times do we do something divided into the total cost, and then that's your average cost that will spread, kind of like property taxes? But the ones that you're looking at, we did ask your, your, your departments, how much time does it take to do X? And are there any other materials or fees or things like that we need to associate to each of those particular transactions? Does that, I apologize, does that get what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. That's helpful thing.
Thank you.
Which, which suggests then no change is based on the, the activity. These fees stay the same because that's what's used to recoup the cost to process that service.
I would agree with that statement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick follow up.
Councilman Taylor.
I'm kind of curious, the other area where the fees seem to be pretty significant, where it would, I, I see as really affecting a lot of the, the citizens who might be looking for a temporary permit. You know, those went up significantly, right, from eighty five, fifty up to, you know, several hundred dollars in all, but most, in most cases. Did we get a sense from Parks and Rec on, on, is that just staff time? Is that the, the, I mean, it's everything that's included, but is that gonna actually, I guess, drive down the number of people that want to be using our fees? I mean, that's one of my biggest concerns. If I had to apply for a, you know, a, a fee and it cost me two hundred and forty two dollars, I'd, yeah, no, no, thank you. I'm gonna go to a church parking lot or, you know, I don't know, but I'm just kind of curious if there was any analysis done by our departments as to what the expected impact would be in terms of more usage, less usage?
Fair question, Mr. Taylor. So again, the tolerance level is going to be a factor that we did, did discuss, you know? Will there be a positive or negative reaction to these fees? Our job within the finance department and our policy is we will provide the full cost recovery method and how much it costs to do the job and inform you that this is what it costs to run the city. You have every right to reduce the rate down to anything below the full cost recovery method. You have every right to do so. Hence why we present it to you. And I think there was even one fee that even the mayor says, you know, we cannot charge seven hundred and fifty three dollars because we believe the tolerance would not be acceptable. So Robert did ask us, what is the regional average of X, Y, and Z? And we got that regional average. Hence why you see one rate as I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars for the large T U P because that's the regional kind of going rate for that. Our true cost recovery is what we presented to you. For us to do this job, this is how much it costs. As long as we convey that to you, that is our task for the finances, convey what it costs to run this city. We understand there's, there's tolerances of political and business and economic. We understand it, and that's why that's in our policy, to give you that tolerance toggle go, I understand what the math is, but no way we can charge us. We still need to run a business, and that's what this is doing. So again, I would say the answer to your question is, no, we did not do a complete poll out there, go, if we increased X, would it impact Y? We did not go out and ask those questions. Will it impact it? We don't know until, I guess, we put the, if we put the fee out, we won't know until then. I apologize, Doug.
And maybe it might be good if I weighed in on, on some of this as well. Again, I wasn't here for the conversation, didn't get a chance to provide at least my perspective for the steps I went through in looking at, at all these fees. I reviewed every single one, and any one that had a large deviation, I asked them to come in and explain to me what those deviations were. And I think in the community development department ones, you know, there were some that were bifurcating processes through that and swapping some of the fees. So they look really big, but in essence, if you put them both together, they're not as, it's not that far, that big of a difference. I'm overgeneralizing. I haven't had that conversation for quite a few months. So it's like, you know, digging back in your brain. But I've also heard most of this council very much talk about how community development needs to run like a business. Growth should pay for growth. Costs should be what costs are. And so I didn't feel as appropriate to make any modifications or adjustments or recommendations based upon the actual costs from that department, even though it's part of our general fund. However, in what I'm gonna say is our city clerk, because they're the ones that actually process the T U P applications, kind of lead that. Those are things that our community has been paying. And I'll, I'll say this, I had a different view on the golf course, and the, and the council said, nope, charge full costs. We're not gonna take a ramp up time. We're just gonna put the cost at where we think the cost should be. In this case, I did make a recommendation that based upon, you know, how much of a tolerance, just to exact, this exact point. And I also used the, the, the variable here. Those are things that we impose upon our citizens. Those aren't required. We don't have to have them do those things, unlike building permits, unlike land use applications. Those are things that are required for people to do. We could charge zero for any C U P or any T U P application. We don't have to recover any costs. We choose to. We ask people to come in and do certain things, and we do impose obligations on them for their event to run successfully, but we don't have to provide, have them pay for that advice and that consent unless we want them to. So that one I didn't feel was necessary because of the high cost difference. And, and I tried to value proposition in a lot of ways. When you look at Boise, who is the outlier of the regional large event costs, but I think that their regional events are much different than our regional events. I, I don't, I don't know that we have anything quite to the level of their criterion of, you know, what's the big music one that they do? I don't even know what that is. Tree Ford, I, I think that some of their events go, are very large in scale in both the breadth as well as the impacts to our community. I'm not gonna say that, you know, Oktoberfest, I heard the numbers say there are about fifteen thousand people in downtown Meridian. It's not, and it's not small, but it's also pretty geographically contained to a short time period and doesn't have as much impacts. It was some of that rationale why I recommended to, don't go up to the full cost recovery on those from that standpoint. But if council thinks that you want full cost recovery, yes. As someone who's done events for the city for my own personal things, I share your concerns. I'm already concerned about the cost of, you know, permits and required activity to do an event in the city. And the more it goes up, the more I'm inclined to, maybe not. Find other alternatives, and maybe that's okay too. So thank you for letting me share my perspective on these before you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
I appreciate that. That's, that's helpful context. I was kind of wondering too, may, or maybe you can shed light, or Todd, but we're looking at kind of four different departments fees here, right? We got clerks, fire, police, planning. And I know we look at, you know, there's other fees that we've kind of see regularly that we've approved. Is it our intention tonight, you obviously, there's a desire to maybe adopt these fees holistically? Is it our intention or your intention to, to suggest that we would look at these fees sort of segmented out each year? Like, we would look at all the police fees as one motion. We'd look at all fire, because I, there's some things that, most of this makes sense, and I can agree with the rationale, and I understand, and I think there's an argument to be made that we want to have full cost recovery. But in some of them, I, I know, I'm not quite there yet. So I'm just kind of curious, this is a lot of fees and one big vote, and it's hard for me to say I can, I'm, I'm getting there. You know, any reason why we don't do that now, or that the future, we might not say, we're gonna, hey, here's all the police fees for the year, look at them, here's the suggested changes and move on?
Mr. Taylor, we're happy to do that. If we need to take small bites of this large beast, we have no problem presenting to you one or two departments for over, you know, a month period. Every week we'll be in front of you with one or two departments. We're happy to do so. Whatever works for you guys on conveying or getting you the information so you can make a comfortable decision, we're happy to do so. Our intent in the finance department, as we continue to get farther into this project, annual, analyze each fee every single year and present to you anything that has major changes for you to review. The big shift is always gonna be year number one, which is right now. Year number two, year three is probably just gonna be small little things because things don't change that drastic between year over year, but we have no problem adapting, adjusting to however the information needs to be conveyed to you in the most comfortable way. We're very comfortable. We're gonna move forward with our to do list, which is get these all done annual basis, present, presentation. We're happy to be flexible and work with you guys.
And maybe just to piggyback on that a little bit, I would say, if you need to take time now to get them right to where you want them, let's take that time now, right, to get them where you want them. Because to Todd's point, next year, hopefully, he's gonna go to the police department and say, these good, okay, salaries went up by X, we're gonna move all these up by X because of the salaries. And in theory, unless we add a new fee, get rid of a fee, or change a process that impacts the fee, you're not gonna see much of a change next year, except for whatever the personnel costs or other costs associated with it that might go up. That's our intention, that's our goal.
Agreed. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Initially, when you first look at this, you get a little sidetracked by the proposed percentage of change. And I had to really look at the fee amounts to, to, to kind of avoid looking at the percentage of change and look at the bigger picture of what we're talking about. Because if you focused on the two thousand nine hundred and thirty percent change and then realized that if you just went up a few lines, the same dollar amount in planned unit developments and in final plat costs, if you add those two up, it's almost the same amount in a reduction of fees for those. You can get sideways if you just look at the percentages. When it comes to the current fee, proposed fees, and the fact that almost forty or fifty of these fees are actually reductions in our current fees, not additions, and that we're making a lot of corrections moving forward, I gotta believe this is the right first step. And there's only one that's got that enormous percentage behind it. Most of them, I believe, are very valid. And we probably should have done this in the past, and we're a little behind on getting caught up on this. I think we are the council that has the opportunity to make this change, catch up and start fresh, and I'd support this change. If we need to move some, we can move some, but I'd support this the way it looks.
Appreciate that, Mr. Overton. You are correct, the twenty nine hundred percent one does, you know, stand out, completely agree. And we did send an email on that particular item after that meeting last week that talked about, it was offset by something else, because we did, as Robert said, bifurcate it, we kind of moved some things around, but so your net overall change, if we implemented this using what Mr. Taylor is talking about, how many units did we sell? Using averages of averages, we think that this will generate forty five thousand dollars of new revenues for the city of Meridian, and your total annual revenue is ninety thousand, ninety million. So you can see, it's not a gigantic change, but yeah, percentage is scary looking. I'm not gonna disagree with you. But again, we think that, based on the numbers, we think this will generate about forty five thousand dollars in new revenues for the city going forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Well, I really appreciate that you took the pawnbroker's license with precious metal dealer endorsement from thirty dollars down to ten dollars and twenty five cents. I think that's good. I worry about the special event for folks that went from eighty five to two hundred and forty five. I don't, I don't generally appreciate the concept of taxpayers subsidizing activities that other people do, right? So that's where I'm, when I look at fees, you should be paying for the services you're derived. I think that's a more fair and equitable way to do it. Right? Like, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Instead of taking general fund fees that I might pay, and I never do some of these things, and we're subsidizing it. So as a general rule, I, I think that's the right approach. I think the sticker shock on some of this is gonna come back to haunt us a little bit if we just drop some of these big fees in one year. I mean, I kind of go back and forth on whether or not to phase a few of these in. I would like, going forward in the future, I think, I would like to look at these segmented out by department. I think that would be better than looking at this massive change. And to your point, after we adopt a big change and the big pain is over, there's gonna be less pain as we look at some of these adjustments. So I think that, I understand that. But I really think that, again, some of our constituents and citizens are gonna let us know how they don't really appreciate, appreciate that. And I kind of going back and forth on some of these fees that are really borne by individuals that are trying to enjoy the amenities that they are paying taxes for already. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
For council's benefit, on, on September sixteenth, I did ask our finance staff to engage with the impacted departments and bring back a proposal for a gradual increase over time for any fee over one hundred and thirty percent. So that was my recommendation at the time. They didn't do that. I, I understand they've got their own reasons. They didn't think they needed to do that, but I think, to me, that addresses both the subjectivity of some of the stuff through the clerk's department, as well as the large percentage increases that we're seeing proposed. So I, I still stand by, I think that's the right approach. Again, bummed that that didn't happen. Looking forward to understanding why down the road.
I think we're just waiting for consensus from the council. That's, you know, how, how do you, how do you want to bite this apple? If that's what you want to do, we can do that. I get it. I think that I wasn't here, I don't know that they heard that from three other people as well. So I think that's the question is, if that's what council wants to adopt an approach, they can bring that back in the resolution and make that approach. Yes.
I'm not trying to air dirty laundry, but that email wasn't responded to. So either the request from a council member is chosen to be ignored or directed to be ignored. I don't know which driving that. I'm disappointed by that. It did take a substantial follow up before I heard from our CFO about my feedback. I think we could have solved this problem a long time ago if staff were a little bit more proactive in communicating and responding to emails from city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
To see if we can move forward from that point. Council President Cavanagh, are you proposing that we move forward, but we cap the increase at one hundred and thirty percent?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilman Overton, I, I, what I'd hoped for is that by tonight, that our staff would have brought back that, that engage with our department directors so that we know, so we can make an informed decision. That, that piece hasn't happened. And so it's hard for me to say thumbs up, thumbs down, when maybe what I think is that crucial piece, you know, I would, I'm curious to understand why a large scale event, we only are wanting to recover at forty nine percent, I believe, and a large scale event in the park is at a higher percentage. I think those are important questions that we should be asking our department before we adopt anything. I don't think that that step has happened. And so that's why I'm, I'm reluctant to support anything, because I've got strong feelings about this process and what we're doing. But we're missing that crucial piece of that impact from our directors. We're just, we're trying to do what we think is best, but we're missing that crucial, crucial piece of information.
If I could, I don't think our departments care what the fee is. The, the fee is what the council wants to recover from those costs. They've, all they've expressed is, this is the cost to do the work. I don't, if, if it goes, I don't even know if the T U Ps are C U, if those go to your department, they go to the parks. And it's not their bottom line budget that it really impacts. It's just, so that, that, that point, I don't think is, that's, it's really what does the council want from your philosophy? If, if you want us to drop down anything that's, you know, in those areas, again, it's not that big of an issue. We're happy to do whatever this council as a body wants us to do on how you want to recover the funds, but the departments don't live or make their budgets based upon these numbers.
And Mr. Mayor, on, on the sixteenth, I laid out what I wanted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Based on President Cavanagh's statement, for the rest of council, I have no problem with asking finance to go back and cap the increases at one hundred and thirty percent this year. But at the same time, you're gonna have to go back and correct some of the decreases that were done in anticipation for some of the other increases. And correct me if I'm wrong, when I look at some of the community development fees that went down while others went up.
Mr., your, your art, Craig, they do go up and down, but they're independent to themselves. We don't use one to offset the other. So if there is a cap to one thirty, it's just, we're just gonna cap everything at one thirty if they still went down, because we still want to true, uh, charge the true cost, just like Mr. Taylor said. If the cost is to do X, that's what we're presenting to you is what we call full cost recovery. This is how much it costs to run this business. You, as Robert's saying, you get to decide what the actual fee is. We've just provided you what it costs your departments to run this particular transaction independent of each other's fees. So if some go down, that's what we're presenting to you based on our input, is that's how much it costs to run that part, that particular business unit. If they went up, that's how much it costs to run that particular, independent of each other. So I'd recommend, if you do cap it, let's not adjust the other ones, because then you're charging more to offset the others, which I don't think is a good business practice, in my opinion. But again, it's your fees. At the end of the day, we will work with you on this. But if you cap it one thirty, I wouldn't recommend raising others to offset the reductions, if I was hearing you correctly.
So council, with that said, and with Councilman Taylor, you make a really good point. We shouldn't be putting a lot of these expenses on the backs of taxpayers to pay for things people come and get. And if we cap these at one hundred and thirty percent, and some of these increases, instead of being passed on to who should be paying those fees, but yet we have other fees now we're going to substantially lower, we're actually gonna increase the burden to our city. We're not increasing it. We're not, we're not, we're not catching up. And we're gonna continue to be behind. And what I'm, what I'm saying by that is, if they're independent of each other, and we're lowering some of these fees by substantial amounts, because there are some substantial amounts being lowered, and there are some that are being increased. But the only thing we do, we don't, we're not capping the amount they can decrease. We're only capping the amount they can increase. I think we need to make sure we're still going in the right direction for trying to obtain this cost recovery model as a city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilman Overton, I, I really agree with you on this, and I think, and that's, that's why it's frustrating, because we don't have that analysis about which fees are being impacted by others. Again, that was the piece that I was, I've been trying to get. I, I, I do push back a little bit that, that we're, we're doing something, we're going backwards. We're, we're really maintaining the status quo. Right? This was something that was laid out, the council was told five years ago they were going to do. Staff moved slow to get us there, so we're, we're just maintaining where we're at. It's a, it's a slower build to get to where we should be, trying to be really sensitive to the impact to our customers, both our citizens and the development community. It's not their fault that we took long to do this, and we certainly wouldn't, you know, propose, right, a twenty seven hundred percent increase on our temporary use permits, right, because we understand the impact that's going to have on our residents. Likewise, I, and I, and I hear you about, we're gonna move something over here, and that's gonna be offset over there. But there's a lot of fees that are there that are proposed. Not all of them do that, and, and we haven't received any of that information about how these are all impacted. And so again, that's where I'm, I'm not comfortable with approving anything, because there's, for me, still a lack of information that should be provided to us before we make a decision.
Other options, you can leave everything where it is and just do a cost of living adjustment moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think that's the case either. I think we, we want to do- I think we, we want to do it right. So it's not, let's, let's rush and get it done now. Like, let's, again, and I'm, and I'm, I recognize that I'm, I'm continuing to kind of repeat myself and I'm, and I'm not trying to be punitive. But if, if this request would have been responded to a month ago, I think council could have had that information available to them to make a decision, one way or another. So it's not a case of, let's just do a cost of living, or let's not approve it, or let's approve it as presented. It's, man, give your city council the information that they need so that they can make, make their best decision. I don't feel like that, I don't feel like I was asking for a lot on the sixteenth. Maybe I was, but I didn't hear back from staff, so I don't know. If I am, I'd love to hear that. And then let's, let's work together as a team to solve this.
Mayor.
Councilor Taylor.
Could be wrong, but just doing my quick counting of if we picked a hundred and thirty thousand as sort of the cap, that, I think I'm only counting about ten or eleven fees that would exceed that. Four of those are temporary use permits, right? Those are people who want to use the parks at different events. Maybe it's a business, maybe it's a person. I think as a general philosophy, I think the right thing is to move there towards this cost recovery model. Sounds like, you know, prior to me coming on council and that was a decision that was made, we want to move towards that. And I think that's the right thing, because I think that's a fair way in which we run the, the city. I, I'm comfortable easing into that just a little bit more. I like the suggestion of, you know, not increasing some of these fees beyond the hundred and thirty percent, or maybe it's a hundred and fifty percent, or some, some number that we think feels fair. But it's, it's a, it's ten, or maybe a dozen fees that exceed that. So the majority of these fees are going to be adopted, increased, decreased on, on, in many cases. I would feel much better having some kind of threshold to say, we're not going to exceed that this year. But that doesn't mean next year we can't continue to work towards it, right? I'm not saying this is a one and done, but we can come back and continue to work towards the ultimate goal of a full cost recovery. I'm comfortable with that. I could support that. I think that's fair and it's reasonable. And I think it's consistent with the direction that was laid out previously, which is, we're going to move towards this. And we finally now have a really good analysis. We understand fully from all the departments what it costs to perform these services. I think that's fair. And so I would personally be comfortable with that, and I have no problem. But keep in mind, when I'm just doing my own quick count, we're talking ten or twelve fees that are above a hundred and thirty percent that we're even talking about.
So would it make sense if we brought back for something for all the ones that are below a hundred and thirty and move those forward? And have finance comment with the, those above one thirty and council decide how they want to, what they, like says, hundred and thirty percent might be three dollars, or it might be a lot more than three dollars. You can decide whether or not above the one thirty, or how you would like to do it, one year, two year, three years. And you guys make that determination and they can put in and they, they can build it forward. So if you want to get to a hundred percent on TUPs over five years, have that conversation about each one of those. Does it, could we do that?
Mayor, Councilmember Doug Taylor, um, just to follow up. Yes, that is about ten fees that are over a hundred and thirty percent. Out of that, two of them are actually an operational change, and I think Caleb can speak to it. But it is the highest percentage change in planning. The final plat and the preliminary plat, operational changes, if there, they were, the current fee was per plat. And there was an email sent out that operational has changed. Those fees, if you take an average for an application of forty plats, those fees are actually being reduced. It looks like percentage wise, they're huge increases, but out of the ten, two of them are actually, the percentages are kind of misleading on that.
So I think that's, we can have a conversation about each of those ten and you can determine, we'll do two rounds, move forward the ones, so we start collecting the appropriate. To say, we'll have a conversation about the other ten at a, at a workshop date as soon as possible on the others. And you all determine how you want to move forward on each individual one, whether it's implemented at all, implemented over time, and go from there. Or don't implement it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Taylor.
I think that, to me, that feels responsible and fair. I would, I think that's an approach I think that I would appreciate. And thank you for the clarification on that.
Mr. Mayor. On top of what you just said, and maybe it would be helpful, because I did, I wasn't here on the sixteenth either, but I didn't watch it. And maybe what the council doesn't have is where did, where did these numbers come from? And what is the work that goes into creating that number? Because a lot of those on the temporary uses, for example, it is a large activity in a lot of events. It encompasses a lot of departments to put on those events. And some of it is trying to recover some of the cost of that, that impact on a park or something like that. But maybe that, your, I think your method would be a way for the council to understand, where do these, why did these change from ten dollars to two hundred dollars? What is it based on? And I think that's what was missing. And I think we could help provide a little bit more clarity on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Overton.
Mr. Mayor is spot on. I think, it's to me, the, the other outliers are this large scale special event. We have it listed as a minimal cost recovery, one to forty-nine percent. Whereas again, these special events in a park, we're looking for a majority of cost recovery, eighty to ninety-nine percent. From a staff perspective, that fee should be at, for the park should be at two hundred and forty-five dollars. We're proposing at one sixty. The fee for large scale special events, two fifty, we're recommending a hundred. So I just, I, I like to get a better understanding why a special event that's in a park has a higher cost recovery than a large scale event that has a minimal cost recovery. Again, I don't know the answer to that and why we would get a recommendation for a, you know, staff says the time to do that, the fee for a large scale special event is more than if we do it in a park, but yet we're recommending less for a special event than if we do a special event in our park. It's just, some of it's just not connecting to me. And I, again, I'd like to maybe hear from our, our parks department or from our finance staff as to what's driving those.
Again, on those ones, I don't know that there was a magical determination. I don't recall. I looked, I just remember the Boise one being there, the large scale event in a, in a, in a lot of ways. But the, but yes, those, those are good conversations to have, if people want to understand those. And I think the, the, the things that you learn through this, uh, this one was brought to my attention, is the, the Easter egg hunt, the Catholic Christianer. Uh, the, the first time they did that event, took a lot of staff time to make it happen. Now, five minute approval for a very large scale event, because they're basically resubmitting the same information. You're not having to go through it. So, you know, you're, you're charging the cost no matter what the workload is based upon averages, not what the actual workload is based upon reality. First year versus year ten, when you can just, that's kind of like the parade. And you dust off the parade route each year. And if you don't change the parade and you don't change what's required, not a lot of extra work that goes into it. So it, it is a little bit of a swinging scale on how, on any event that you do in the city. First time versus the fifth time and those costs. So as I've been informed. Think we got a plan? What we were hoping for, so.
No, Mayor, we can easily get you two reports, one under a hundred and thirty percent, another report with the ten transactions. And again, as Mr. Cavanagh said, if he wants to hear from directors on any concepts, we can easily have the directors available. We'll go ahead and send out the email to the council and directors, go, hey, please prepare to, tell your directors, please be prepared to answer these questions. And hopefully you can get the answers before the meeting, so that you'll have the data before the meeting and just get it approved accordingly. No, but definitely doable. I mean, there's the whole process is give you guys the fees, review them, give us inputs, thoughts. We, we will adjust accordingly. Our job is to convey to you what the true cost recovery is, which we've done. We need you to give us guidance on what feels right to you. That's, that's the ultimate goal. So what you're doing here is exactly what we need. If you have questions or concerns on process, let us know. We'll work with your directors. Uh, we are kind of your messenger. These, you know, they're not our fees, they're the city's fees, and we're doing the best we can to communicate seven hundred and sixty-three fees to you guys. So again, we appreciate this.
With that, you'll be bringing back something next week or next two weeks, however long it takes to get something put up on the ones. And we'll schedule the others appropriate around, I think, is an MDC next week.
Next week.
So probably won't be until the week after or into November for the other ones, so. Counsel, anything else, or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Fair.
Councilor Overton.
We've got the service accessibility tool used in development.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Still on our agenda.
I apologize.
Right. Poor Brian. And I know you're probably hungry, Mr. Mayor, but this, I know this is something councils wanted to hear some feedback.
I'm absolutely not. I just thought that that was going to be the one that was going to take the most time. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item eleven, uh, service accessibility tool used in development staff reports. Turn this over, Mr. McClure.
Mayor, members of council, I'm here to talk about the service accessibility tool and department reports, AKA the service impact tool, which is part of growth priority areas. The confusing title is a little intentional. The purpose of the discussion is to follow up on our request to review the service accessibility tool and the department report. Much of the focus here will be on where it came from and how things have changed. There's a lot of names and references really since two thousand and seventeen, with original concept and implementation varying. I'll try to describe this as just the tool or service tool, but I'll probably slip. So it's, it's all service something. This is an outline of the presentation and discussion. Number one is origination of the tool. Number two, or overview of the tool itself. Number three, criteria and metrics. Number four, implementation. One other note here, but the process period here is years, as I sort of alluded to. I'm going to refer to council throughout. It's understood that the people in council change and that the council persons may each have their own individual opinions on a lot of this. The short here or there, though, is that city council body has seen and directed every major element of this tool. And so this can be a moving target for staff, made much more complex when staffing changes. The tool goes back to the concept of growth priority areas, in which were a significant topic of discussion and, and a priority of council when developing the two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan. The tool was budgeted as part of the scope of work of the plan and was important enough to warrant several paragraphs of text and policies. This was, again, largely driven by the mayor and council at the time. Changes a topic of discussion later, but sort of a segue. And I only learned of this a few weeks ago, but in city code, the term growth priority area only shows up once in Title Eight for infrastructure reimbursement. All previous mapping efforts for that topic, uh, now years ago, were done through IT and none of that was formally adopted or approved, a condition of that code. As an aside, other core analysis wrapped up into the tools that were developed with the comprehensive plan were marketing corridor analysis. Growth priorities in concept was the bow on transportation corridor and market analysis, and then timing. Here are some related policies. Some of these have gone in different directions or fallen out of favor with other work priorities. It's entirely up to the mayor and city council, it's just context. Regardless, the tool was developed and integrated into more generalized workflows, including part of the department reports that you guys have seen. Miranda Carson, uh, now with West Data, also worked with council on some of the reporting, uh, when she was in community development, including the colors, uh, reporting, and then highlighting areas to consider, and not just assume good or bad. More recently, staff worked with council on, on integration of this tool into the department report. I have some text on some of this in the next slide. I apologize. These are the most relevant paragraphs of text in the comprehensive plan. I'm skipping the intro section for this tool and several other related tools. The short here is that the tool, uh, is called, as called out as doing what was envisioned. It's just sort of not getting quite as far. It's doing, it's checking all the boxes, we just don't use it to its fullest. I'll leave this here momentarily and then move on. Moving into overview, uh, the tool ranks all partials in the city for readiness. Apart from formal, uh, and clear growth priority areas, it was implemented as a reminder of the, for the entitlement process. Considerations like efficiency in the context of location. Metrics being reported out, and this is sort of a stress for this presentation, does not mean a project is good or bad. The project in a good location could be a lemon. A project with some challenges could also be mitigating all those impacts and efficiencies or even improving it. Again, the original sort of scope and purpose here was, was larger than a project. It was a citywide analysis. This tool reflects existing conditions, not what is being proposed in front of you. This is where we start, and then a developer or staff can then compare. Ideally, an applicant uses a baseline to demonstrate value to the city, improving connectivity, improving efficiency, whatever that is. Uh, and especially in the context of the policies and the comprehensive plan, which staff do reference. These are high level scoring categories. Bold and italics, also in green, were prioritized by council and have the largest weight. There are actually eighteen, uh, separate geospatial models that are part of this tool, um, often with their own dependency work and, and then server processing that's on, on, on top of that. And a few of these like, like location and plats are combined into the, into the final report. So these don't align one to one with the report that you see in staff reports, but they're, they cover all the general topics and they reflect what was sort of driven forward as part of the comprehensive plan. Some of these are modeled and measured in very similar ways and others are very different. Before going into some of those measurement types, so a few notes on items that have been discussion areas with council more recently. Emergency services for police are not drive time. Police, I think, obviously patrol. And while there could be some considerations like efficiency loss with some development patterns, this is understanding crime statistics in several different categories within reporting districts, generally section miles. They have service goals, but response times are, isn't a key metric for all those categories. Similarly, uh, or actually the opposite, fire, for fire response times is important in this tool. But that includes call processing, turnout time and travel time. It's not just, uh, how long they take to get outside once they leave the station. All of this is modeled using street network, including intersections. I noticed, I noted previously, but there's several different ways to, some of these are measured, and I think this will help with some of the questions previously. Two primary that may be helpful are boundary edge and centroid. Boundary edges are, uh, only include the data within the boundary. So sewer analysis, for example, is not just a distance from the project to main line, but the distance from the project to the main line in the trunk shed that project is within. So you can't just jump over trunk sheds easily. There's a whole lot of extra work that goes into that. Police reporting districts, as mentioned, are, are the same as well. Uh, only data within a reporting district is considered. If no data, red is simply not green or yellow. We don't know what we don't know. Related, the reporting districts use level of service modeling that police department was already using prior to the tool. It's not new reporting, it's just included with a bunch of other metrics. The other primary measurement tool is a centroid, what is generally the center of a partial, and then the distance measurement from that to a feature of interest. Usually that is using the street network model again, so distance along roads, not as the bird flies. Centroid was used to consider an average for projects, again, with citywide partial analysis, um, and particularly for larger projects. You don't, for example, uh, have a project that touches the edge of a, of a park walking shed and say, everything within that project is walkable when ninety-nine percent of the units might be, fall outside of that. So we use the, the partial center as an average. All of this data updates nightly through automated, um, sequel procedures and GIS modeling. Uh, that's accessed directly from the server. The data is always the latest and is the same information we use for all other systems. Data that is not ours, like partials or road center line, uh, is updated no less than monthly. Stations, parks and schools are all kept current. The city council approved these through multiple meetings prior to the comprehensive plan adoption, and then was reviewed again in the last few years with Miranda. The reports are also, uh, collapsed for simplicity. Each metric is sometimes actually a series of models with their own schools, scores that sort of rolled up. Colors have been a topic, they've been a topic in the past. And which doesn't mean we can't revisit them. Red is simply stop and consider context, though, it's not stop and go away. As I understand it, it's like a single red flashing light in the middle of an intersection. You stop, sometimes you wait, sometimes you go, um, and then you go. Hopefully this overview today. Hopefully this overview today helps a little with that. Red was never intended to be bad and other options considered by council had less support. Related, this is consistent with other direction. Current planning staff have been explicitly asked to include more formatting reports like color, bold, underline in their staff reports for emphasis, be it good or bad. Moving into implementation of the tool, this is what the report looks like. You've hopefully seen this in the department reports. Keep in mind, again, that these are single line scores and there's a lot more going on in the background. Difficult to wrap your head around all of it. Access to the tools for staff is either in a server SQL or Power BI report. Staff generally access these directly from GIS links when they, and then these are supposed to be given out to other staff and applicants with pre-application meetings when requested. I'll get here in a minute, but please note the name on this, on the left here. It's called service accessibility. And then this report here for, if you're curious, is just for City Hall. The complete report is usually an attachment towards the back of a department report, closer to the front with the other infographic, infographics that council requested with the department reports is a color graph. Again, this one here is for City Hall. The title on this one is service impact summary, going back to a comp plan policy, but I think it's confusing. Time brings change. After years of council discussion, integration in enterprise databases, pandemic and changing priorities and prolonged development of the department report, the finished product is not quite as originally envisioned. Concepts like growth priority areas have become more conceptual than formal. Staff do believe the tool has value, though, when used consistently through the development review process, starting at a pre-application meeting. Everyone needs to be on the same page, though, and so again, hopefully some of this helps. Some additional change may be helpful still. From recent experiences, additional notes in the department report possibly being moved up to the chart or graph. I'm not planning to flash another wall of text with you, but we also do have a department report notes that we could revisit in general related to that graph and, and report. Institutional memory for staff needs to change as well. It's been a struggle for staff to sort of build back to pieces to be able to explain some of this with other people having been involved for a while. Perhaps more onboarding with new council persons would help. We're also happy to take suggestions. I think naming, for example, could generally be improved. With that, I'm happy to have a conversation on any of this. We also have, we did also meet with fire and PD. We have Deputy Chief Talby and Captain Leslie here. They can help me with fire and PD considerations if needed, but I'll do my best to answer any questions or take feedback.
Thank you, Brian. Council, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Low Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, Brian, thank you very much for that. I think one of the things that really got the discussion going one night is we were dealing with bare dirt, bare ground, no roads, no nothing, but yet fire came out yellow and police came out red. But yet there's no, nothing there, so there'd been no activity for the police to ever respond to, so crime was zero. So we were really trying to figure out, how did we get red? But there's no roads for the fire trucks to get there either.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, the tool definitely reflects existing conditions and not what's being proposed by a development. Modeling for a street network and fire is especially telling there because you see how long it would take a developer, a fire engine to get there before they extend roads. And that may be a very different picture when they improve connectivity in the area. They might have new points of access, they might not have to go through a long way down arterial roadways. Police reporting, that goes back to, red was intended to be, and I'll just be honest, I don't like the colors. But red was intended to be, you know, just, we don't know what we don't know, we're calling this out. It was not intended to be bad. So usually they have some text notes in their, in their report that says, we don't have any data in this area. Maybe that's one of the areas that could be improved, though, better notes to go along with those. I don't, I don't know what they all say.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Along those same lines. In one of the first slides, I saw at the bottom, it stood out to me when it said, "Not a development review tool."
Do you remember, Councilman, do you remember which slide that was?
I'd say it was the second or third. It was actually italicized. It was, I wrote it down right as it was. It is not a development review tool. Bottom statement. It reflects current conditions. And I, I sit there and I look at that and I think it's in our packets and we're looking at a development and we're reviewing that application with a tool that says it's not a development review tool. And then we get into a situation where I have comments from police and I have comments from fire and I got, there's a green light. You know, we got a, a new station, we got a new fire station, we got a precinct, we got cops close, we got all these things closed, but yet I've got this tool that to all of us that know the colors, looks like caution. And I got, I admitted, I was probably one of the most frustrated up here when I saw that because it's not that I don't like the colors. I was struggling to find the usefulness of the tool itself. When I see an area that's all single family and it gets a low score for transit, of course it does. Transit's going to be looking for areas where they can get the highest ridership through mostly areas of multifamily. I mean, that's, I've sat, had coffee with the CEO, I know what she's striving for in transit. But yeah, we have a tool that designates our areas like we've got a problem with that in the tool. And I'm, I'm not sure that putting it in these staff reports is the right place for it. And I'm not sure where the right place is because it sure puts us in an awful position when we're up reviewing a plan, when we're trying to say it looks good and we're staring at a page that's got that green, yellow and red. And like you said, you don't like the color red. Well, I don't like the color red when from that location on the map, I can see a police department and it says I don't have any response. So there's, I think that's where there's a disconnect between how the tool has been built and how we're currently using it and how it's being interpreted on the diets. And we need to make sure that we somehow fix that so we don't have those miscommunications. I don't mean I want to go old school, but my gosh, when we've got police representatives and fire representatives and I saw that chart, I threw that chart away and I went straight to the source and they said, we don't have a problem with that area. And I felt good moving along, we were in good shape, but I feel terrible that we invest this kind of time in a tool that I wasn't getting good information from that helped me that evening.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Overton, the words on the screen here are mine. I didn't, perhaps could word it differently. It's definitely does not review the merits of a development coming through. It's being used now, again, that's not necessarily the original concept that we had, but it's being used now as here's the baseline where we're starting, this is what exists out there right now. So there may be a police station across the street, but it's, they don't have enough data out there right now within the large area to report anything. There may be a fire station across the street, but that doesn't mean they can get there because it's an NDA or partial and they haven't provided all the roads towards the center of it yet, you know. Valid points and concerns, I, I, I'm not the decision maker on how this, we should use this. Can certainly talk about it more, though, and you have Caleb here. But I will say the data in there is, is solid. There's reasons why it does that. If we need to get into more of that detail, we can do that as well. It's pretty gnarly, but we can get IT here. So, so yes, it's, it's used in format, here's where we're at. That's, that's all. And then people, someone, I don't know who, staffer or an applicant should be saying, this is where you're at and these are all the things we're improving for you. And are we still missing anything after all said and done? That's not the tool, though, that's, that's analysis by staff, that's narrative by an applicant, that's traffic impact studies or whatever those things are, that's, those are those other things, though. The service impact tool, again, it's been repurposed from what was originally growth priority areas to understand where we wanted to grow and prioritize those areas to something slightly different. It's related, but it's different.
Mr. Mayor, quick follow up.
Councilman Overton.
So you say it's, it's, it's based on good data, when there's data. And I think the problem we had in some of these cases is there's no data because we're annexing an open field. And I know for a fact, if it's causing this group of six issues, it's gotta be causing confusion at planning and zoning as well. And I just, I almost wonder whether we should be taking this out of our staff reports until we get this tool right, where it actually is helping us move forward with our applications. Because I don't want to see anything in our applications that's, that's a data-driven tool that's causing us more concern than helping us progress with the right decision.
Councilman Low.
Brian, thank you for the, the update on this. And I, being the newest member of the council, would agree that this is probably a very good review with the onboarding of any new council members in the future. Because I certainly didn't understand and I was experiencing the same thoughts and feelings that the other members had. Red to me meant stop, but I appreciated your, your comments that it means stop and consider the context, not stop and go away. But how are we supposed to consider the context? Again, I am not a SQL server magician and I have no idea what happens every night when it updates with GIS data and everything else. But at some point, I need the context. And I need either notations or something that says, while this has, indicates red or this indicates yellow, here's the context. And, and that's what would be helpful to me if we're going to utilize a tool, just a red, yellow, green. It, it, it's simple in nature, but it's very difficult from a utility standpoint without the context.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Brian, thank you. I'll share the same thoughts with Councilman Whitlock and maybe even suggest a, how to read a packet for new council members because it takes a little bit of work to understand. And I am guilty also looking at that and thinking this was an analysis of the application as opposed to, what I really like is the location readiness. I kind of flagged that. When I think of it, the feedback is this is what the current status of this location based on these metrics. That's helpful for me to understand and I, it's a new revelation to me to understand how that tool is to be used. Is there, my question is, is there any way to marry up the proposal and the connectivity, the new roadways maybe being proposed and how that might change the scoring on this metric to say, current readiness of the project is this, the new development with the proposed changes would change it to this. Is that something that we could do or would that be a little bit inappropriate? Because that's assuming a decision that maybe we haven't made.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Taylor. The tool is using pretty cutting edge tech, but the concept of the tool is a little dated now. There's other better tools that do what you just said and re, to repurpose a tool we have now to do analysis on a project, I'd have a hard time justifying as being a worthy endeavor. There are other tools that do that, that other agencies use, including even in the valley, but we don't use them now, we don't have them immediately available. So I don't really, not a great option for doing a compare and contrast right now. It's technically possible, but it would be a huge lift and I'm not sure it'd be the best outcome.
That's fair, Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Mr. Taylor.
Is it, is this tool require a significant amount of staff time and coordination to feed the data into it? Or is a lot of it automated because you've worked on it and you've kind of set it up? I'm trying to get a sense for the utility of us on council, the utility for staff to use it and how much, how many resources are being required to kind of keep it up to date? Can you give me a sense for what that looks like?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Taylor, yeah, so the, the tool itself is, no, things happen in IT, right? And they break. We do an upgrade of any sort and something breaks that no one expected. So the tool has broken before because we upgraded our GIS system and they, and Esri depreciated one of the things we were using and we had to, have to reconfigure it. But for a daily, weekly, monthly sort of snapshot of, of use, there's no update, there's no process. It's all completely automated.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Brian, a couple of just quick questions in, in interest of time, if you want to follow up later too, that's okay. Were the top three users of this tool from staff's perspective? Council, planning and zoning, is it applicant, is it other staff? And I recognize through your presentation, you feel like to a degree it's, it's doing what it's intended. Is that doing what it's intended for the intended audience, I guess, is maybe a, a bigger question that I'm, I'm curious about. And to maybe take it a step further, what kind of grade would you give it for each audience? Because, right, you've got a council here that is feeling like, man, we're relying on this information in part and it's included in a staff report to help us make a decision. And if, if we're not feeling like that that information is meeting our intention, I think that's part of the reason why we're talking tonight. But if it's meeting planning and zoning, or it's meeting staff, or it's meeting the applicant again as an audience, I think that's also a good piece for us to hear, right? We don't want to make drastic changes if it's meeting, if we're giving As to these other intended audiences and maybe the council's like a B minus or a C plus. So I'm trying to be inclusive as to who all these, you know, users are and if, if the council is the only outlier that's, that's struggling with the benefit of it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kavner, in 2017, 2018, I would have said this tool is bees knees and it's awesome and we should be doing this. I did, to some degree. Now, not so much, you know, it's, like you said, it's cutting edge tech, but it's not, it's not being implemented and well. We've, we've diverged past from where it was intended to go and gone somewhere else with it. So I think it has, and I'm going to get myself in trouble. I, I think it has a lot of value for staff and for an applicant. I know, these are the things that we should be looking at and these are the things that we should be addressing in our narrative and our application and making sure that when we propose something to our decision makers, the city's kept hold and everyone understands that this is a good idea. I, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I don't think we're always doing that as well as we could be, be. For city council, you know, we, we haven't had a lot of screen time on this. It took so long with all the different things happening to get this in front of you. And if I were to rank the limited discussion I've seen of this, it wouldn't, I don't have, it wouldn't be a C or higher. It, it hasn't, it's not doing, it could have value as it's being used right now. I don't feel like it has a lot of value as it's implemented right now. And there's my keeper.
Can I, can I maybe just add, Brian's in big trouble? No, quickly, and I realize you have a, a pretty good sized agenda this evening. But just back to your, your question, Councilman Kavner, for the most part. I, I think it does help staff initially in the pre-apps and that get, Brian mentioned it a couple of times, but an initial, you cold called us, you want to meet with us next week. Here's a snapshot of where our services are now. And we, honestly, we as staff kind of do use it as a little bit of a scorecard. Oh, look, red sewer, sewer's a mile away. That's going to be an issue, public works, is it really an issue? Can we mitigate that issue? Some things like it's a low density subdivision, we don't expect transit service to be awesome. Or it's a field with no parks nearby, that's probably okay, we know the context of that. So back to the, you know, staff and applicant, early on, it's a, I think it's, I'll give it a B plus even. It, it can be a nice tool to say, this is the condition of your property and where, how long it ta, if you dial 911 from that property today, here's how long it takes fire to get there, there's where the nearest park is, there's where their school is. It helps set that stage. When it gets to yours, you know, how you should use it and, and we And and we can have that conversation. We just looked at the staff report template. So maybe we take it out of that and we just leave it in the notes from staff at the pre app and say, look, we shared that. And but we really do work with the agencies today. Then their conditions of approval say, we'll mitigate that our response time is 15 minutes or that sewer is a mile away or whatever. So the conditions of approval also provide the context for that. We can provide those services. Here's what the developer is doing. They're bringing that sewer to the property. We don't have the tool. We can't do that. Well, we could. We don't have the resources to do it. But that's really, so I I kind of do at this point, too, question if it's appropriate for the staff report. We're trying to get you to understand how it's being used, though. And it isn't the, I think Brian's intent with that, it's not a tool for development purposes. Doesn't spit out the answer for you. Doesn't tell you if you should approve a project or not. It just says, and sometimes the data is missing. And we've talked about that. And maybe we use brown, it's missing data or whatever, like, hey, the red isn't bad. It's just a pause. And why is it red? Oh, it's because we don't have any data. How can we relay that information better? But anyways, that's.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, just real quick.
Councilman Kavner.
I think maybe because I was here when you guys were kind of conceiving this. And I I do see that it is a valuable tool for staff, for applicant. But I also think that with, with some right context, it can be really beneficial for the city council. So I'm, I'm not in the spot of saying, let's do away with it. What I'm saying is let's, let's provide maybe some of that extra analysis example, right? My thermostat says it's 63 degrees. Now, if the temperature is 100 degrees outside, my house is awesome. It's great. I I want that to be, my house to be 63 degrees, right? If it's 35 degrees outside, man, I want my house to be warmer, right? The the data point is the temperature, right? The information that you guys provide there is data points. But particularly for some areas, and to me, and I think it's areas that are probably in yellow and in red and brown or whatever, some extra analysis for council as to what's driving that. So helping us to understand, here's the why. And these are the things that you as council should be thinking about. That this is, it's, I think, a great partnership between staff and the council is to help us see through your guys' eyes why those things are being rated the way that they are. So just for feedback, I, again, if council wants to to dump it, that's fine. I I think there is a value there. I think there is merit for us and for our planning and zoning. And I just think it, it's more about leveling it up a little bit. Now that we've used it for a little while, you've got some feedback. Let's make it meet what you guys had hoped it would, it would do for council when this was first conceived.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just quickly respond again. And we can do a better job. I think we we glom onto some of the things from report. We'd always tie it back to the report, though, too. Right? If it is an area where we anticipate transit, we can say, hey, this density may be okay. And but we don't then tie that back to, and it was red on the service side. And this is something that we're, you know, would make it yellow or green even. So good feedback. And we can, we can sort of use it more and not develop a tool that automatically spits out the answer, but says, hey, look, by what the applicant's doing and the conditions of approval, this somewhat mitigates the red. Or the context is sprawl. And that's why a lot of this is red is because we don't have any facilities out there. Really, council, though, do you want them to build a mile of sewer or not? I mean, it's infrastructure we then have to maintain. I don't know that planning staff will do that analysis, right? That may be something more for public works. And how do they put that in context to mitigate their service and the accessibility or readiness of that service? We can share that feedback. But again, it's a tool that's in the planning staff report. But it really is a lot of inputs from other service providers, some of them internal. But anyways, good, good feedback. And I'll talk to the team and figure out how we can use it better and more and change notes and make it clear where data is maybe missing or.
Caleb, maybe one other thing that I don't know if this council has any interest or desire. But who who set the standards of red, yellow and green? Do you want council to to have feedback on that so that there's an agreement? Even the understanding, if one person's green, maybe another person's red. Can you really align so that you even understand what that means? I'll throw that out there because I don't recall a conversation where you all said, well, here's what this should be and here's what this should, you know, here's what the standards should be altered or where it matters.
But, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I, we did do that in 18, 19, right around when the comp plan. And and with the recommendation from, again, those sort of, you know, public work said half a mile seems reasonable or within 1,200 feet. That's when it should be, you know, anything adjacent, that's green. It's readily, if someone went to and through the property, green, quarter of a mile more, yellow. But that was vetted through, again, council at that time. But your policy, if you wanted to change where those lines break between green and yellow or yellow and red, yeah, but so it is maybe it's older at this point.
Or at least discuss it so there's a general understanding about everybody about.
Or we can just report that data and not do red, yellow, green. We can just say it's 500 feet. You can determine if that's red, yellow or green as individuals. It's just, it's a data point. It's there. It's this far away.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
This is really helpful because it's helping me understand the data I'm getting and what I should learn from it. I wouldn't want just a static number that I don't understand from your perspective and context. What does it mean? You guys know a lot more than I do. I need some context on some of this. But just this presentation to help me understand how I should maybe use it is good. I think we can make it more helpful. But we do want to see context from you because you guys do with, deal this with this every day. So I I wouldn't want you to get rid of it entirely.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Brian, Caleb, you good to take it from here for whatever you're gonna take that from? Okay. Councilman Kavner.
It's to the end of our workshop agenda. Move adjourned.
Emotion's second journal, favoritized by Saint I. Close day, the I S have it, we are adjourned.
Council will call this meeting to order for the record. It is October 21st, 2025 at 6:02 PM. We'll begin tonight's State Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilman Taylor.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilman Whitlock.
Here.
Mayor Simson.
Here. Next time is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Council, next up is our community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Rajan Zed, President of the Universal Society of Hinduism. If you'd all please join us in this prayer or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
It is an honor to read the invocation in this great hall of democracy of the great city of Meridian. I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE in Sanskrit, then interpreted in English. May all rise, please. Om. Bhur vahas vahah tat sabhatur varayam bargo devasya dimahi diyo yo na prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Asoma sadgamyam tamso ma jyotirgamyam mritiyor mamratamgamyam. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmaada sakta statham karama samachara. Asakto haacharan karma pharma bhavati purusha karma neva hi samshiddi mastita jankadeya. Loka sangreha mevapi sampashankar tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha nababatu saha nobanaktu saha viren karba bahai. The just be nava dita mastu ma vidhvisa bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva kutti samna hirdhanyeva samnamastu voh mano yata vasusa hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rajan Zed. Appreciate it very much. And best of luck on your commute to Star. Council, next up is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Caver.
We adopt the agenda as published.
Have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the agenda is agreed to. Squirt, anyone want to sign up under future meeting topic or public?
Mr. Mayor, there's no signups.
Okay. So with that, council will move on to item one, which is Resolution Number 25-2538. Bringing forward you two new members to our Historic Preservation Commission. Had a lot of interested applicants in this open call for people to serve. And but there are a little bit of similarities in I think some of the outgoing purpose. But with all the great people who applied, I did always give preference to people from our community first and foremost. And I think that was an important component to because we had several people applied that were either in the area of City Impact or in Boise that want to come serve in this role. But these are two Meridian residents. I'll start with Harold Wilson, who's a longtime Meridian connection. And really, you know, he wants to protect the memories of his childhood. I think that that's an important part of what he wants to bring to the table. You know, loves history. He's Assistant Dean of General Education of the College of Western Idaho. A teacher, been involved with friends of Meridian Library. So you know, that library connection is actually a great one as we continue to transition our historical collections to the library. And so having a little bit of that interest in there really showcase his interest in this area. The other one was Haley Stewart. She's just looking to get engaged in her community, but also believes in learning from the past and really wants to focus on how do we get our younger generation involved? I think that was kind of probably a little theme in my engagements this time around was when does history really start, you know, for people, you know? I try to imply that we make history up here every week. Good, bad, relevant, irrelevant in some cases. But you know, this history 50 years ago, 20 years ago, five years ago. So how do you really look at that? And I think that Haley really kind of talked about, you know, sometimes you had to get younger people involved with relevant history and not just looking back on things that they can't really connect to through that. But they all expressed an interest and willingness to be involved and engaged, whether it's helping lead the tours or rolling up their sleeves and trying to apply their trades where Haley's a senior communication specialist and how to help grow the work that their Historic Preservation Commission is doing. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would consider a motion on these two individuals.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
First, credit to you and HPC for continuing to attract such great candidates. Just really just great to see how HPC is continuing to flourish and grow. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move that we approve Resolution Number 25-2538, appointing Haley Stewart to seat four and Harold Wilson to seat five of the Meridian Historic Preservation Commission.
Second. Have a motion second to approve Resolution Number 25-2538. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the resolution is agreed to. So congratulation to our newest members of the Historic Preservation Commission. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to our action items this evening. We've got a busy, busy evening together. But first item up is a public hearing for Fairborn Subdivision Number H2025-0036. We open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a combined preliminary and final plat. This site consists of 5.2 acres of land, its own CC, and it's generally located at the northwest corner of North Black Cat Road and West Chindon Boulevard. In 2018, this property was included in a rezoned preliminary plat and a development agreement modification application for Fairborn subdivision, which included the adjacent residential subdivision to the north and the west. A new development agreement was approved with the modification, which governs future development of the overall property. Final plat applications were approved for all of the property included in the preliminary plat, except for this last remaining area, which was intended to be included in the last phase. However, a final plat application was never submitted, a time extension was not requested, and the preliminary plat has since expired. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed-use community. A combined preliminary and final plat is proposed, consisting of one buildable lot on 5.2 acres of land in the CC zoning district. A conceptual development plan was submitted, as shown there on the left, that depicts three commercial building pads for retail and office use. The largest pad A is proposed to be a grocery store at 25,623 square feet. Pad B is 11,234 square feet and pad C is 4,964 square feet. The proposed development plan is consistent with the provisions in the development agreement. Access is proposed via one existing full access driveway from West Waverston Drive and one right-in, right-out access driveway from North Black Cat Road. No access is proposed or allowed via West Chindon Boulevard. An emergency access exists to this site via blanket easement across Lot 17, Block 7, in the abutting Fairborn subdivision number two to the west. And that is, as you can see my cursor right here, through that common driveway right there. Detached five-foot-wide sidewalks exist on this site along Waverston and Black Cat. A 10-foot-wide detached sidewalk and pathway exists in the street buffer along Chindon Boulevard. ITD submitted a letter requesting the developer contribute a proportionate share toward installation of a west-bound right-turn lane at Chindon and Black Cat as required with the original Fairborn development, which has not yet been constructed. And that is in that little area there shown in red. Street buffers exist on this site along abutting streets that were installed with the adjacent subdivision improvements. Additional landscaping and design features are needed in the buffers to comply with UDC standards. A 25-foot-wide buffer to residential uses also exists along the west boundary of the site with a six-foot-tall closed vision fence. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the proposed grocery store, as shown on the right. Final design is required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. Loading docks are prohibited in commercial districts along Collector Street, which is Waverston and Black Cat, or Arturial, Chindon Boulevard, streets per the Architectural Standards Manual. The commission recommended approval of this application to city council. Ben Semple, the applicant represented, testified in favor. There was no opposition. Paul McLaughlin, Larry Walker, Bob Misco, and Jessica Pierce commented on the application. And there was no written testimony that was submitted. Key issues of discussion were as follows: the access and traffic concerns pertaining to vehicles turning left into the development and stacking issues that may occur; safety concerns pertaining to traffic and children in the area; belief that the Chindon and Black Cat intersection needs to be rebuilt for safety reasons to accommodate the high volume of traffic in this area; and concern pertaining to landscaping between the site and the abutting residential neighborhood to the west to ensure residents aren't looking at a parking lot. Key issues of discussion by the commission were traffic generated from the proposed development and the use and zoning. Just a statement that the use and zoning are not the subject of this application. Just a reminder that this is a subdivision application. The commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation, and there are no outstanding issues for council tonight. There has been written testimony since the commission hearing that's been received from Christie Keller. She has concerns pertaining to traffic and inadequate infrastructure for the development of a grocery store on this site. And from Jessica Perk, opinion the proposed, or excuse me, the existing landscaping and fence height along the west boundary is inadequate to buffer the adjacent residential neighbors from noise, lighting, and traffic impacts from the proposed development. Concern pertaining to increased traffic in the area and children's safety crossing Waverston Drive to reach the school bus stop. Request for taller fencing and more robust landscaping to be provided in buffers with mature trees and shrubs. Reevaluation of access points to minimize traffic being funneled onto Waverston, and greater consideration of residential impacts, particularly around school routes. Both of those folks submitted written testimony. Jessica did submit some videos as well that were included in the public record. And staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, will the app kind of like to come forward?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ben Semple with Rodney Evans, City Partners, 1450 West Bannock Street, Boise, 83702. If I can get this microphone to cooperate. Sorry, I had my presentation on my phone and it's trying to make me do something different here. Okay, so yeah, I want to first of all thank Sonia for the presentation. She did a good job encapsulating what the application is here before you tonight. Again, Fairborn subdivision number four at the northwest corner of West Chindon and Black Cat Road. Just to reiterate the vicinity map, area of the future land use as mixed-use community and the current zoning is CC. This is the original pre-plat as shown from 2018 for the overall Fairborn subdivision. In red is the lot in question. As Sonia stated, this was the final phase of this multi-phased project. And this was with the original pre-plat and zoning and annexation was assigned a CC zone with the intent of this developing with commercial uses per the approved development agreement. The current pre-plat, you can see on the upper right there, basically the same, just a single lot preliminary plat. And then the final plat is representative of that single lot final plat. The landscape plan is on the left here, demonstrating some upgrades along the road frontages for landscape buffering. The western landscape buffer currently meets the UDC standards, but based on comments from neighboring residents to the west there, I'm working, I'm the landscape architect on this project and will be for the upcoming actual site development package that gets submitted for review and intend to work on, you know, adding some additional buffering, filling in some gaps. There's some lawn over there that's kind of on a berm. But the fence doesn't actually sit on the berm, so it's kind of an interesting situation where the, my client would like to make sure that he's being a good neighbor and provide some additional buffering to to those users. Additionally, the site plan was developed to ensure that most of the the use is as far away from the residents as possible. There is parking that's there, but that is outside the 25 foot landscape buffer that's required. And if you've gone to a grocery store, which I'm sure you all have, you try to park as close to the store as possible, so anticipate that that western side probably ends up with some employee parking. And I'm going to be talking with that developer about that option of maybe setting those aside for employees so that there's not car doors opening and closing next to residential that way. Just an aerial photo of the existing landscape that's there on the site right now. The conceptual building elevations are still in process of being developed. These will get more fleshed out as we get through this process. The issue we have here is that because this was never final plated, my client can't submit an application for this building or a site plan until we have a legal lot to be able to submit to the city. Upon that submittal, you know, we're going to have another neighborhood meeting. We're going to work with, I've been talking with the Fairborn subdivision HOA president pretty extensively, trying to set up a meeting, not only with the Fairborn subdivision, but Modern Craftsman and Spurwing also feed into this area in terms of traffic, have expressed some desire to get some feedback and kind of provide some feedback to us on this plan. And so I'm working with my client to set up a time after he has a more fleshed out development plan here for the the actual site. The two pads that are up by Chindon are intended to be kind of a build to suit. They could be retail, they could be office. None of them are drive-through restaurant. You know, trying to stay away from some other drive-through establishments that have come through. And I wanted to point out to the conceptual site plan, which is based on those pad sizes, at least the ones on Chindon, and then on the building size and use that we're anticipating for the grocery use. The total parking required for those three uses would be 85 parking spaces. What we have shown here right now is 216 parking spaces. Just the grocery store use alone would require 81, oh, I'm sorry. We would be 81 above the requirement that is for that use. And that was driven by the potential user Boise Co-op that really wants to make sure that they have adequate parking for their customers as well as, you know, to buffer any issues. If you've been to some other smaller grocery stores where they have some smaller parking lots, we want to avoid that too. And finally, I guess, or we are in agreement with all of the terms and conditions of the staff report, all the agency comments. Here are kind of our responses to those conditions. We've made some adjustments already or will be making adjustments to the final plat before it's submitted for signature. And then we will supplement the landscape as I discussed. I did want to mention that a lot of what is, a lot of the concern here with traffic, parking, access, we want to address as well. My developer shares some of the concerns from the neighbors in the neighborhood regarding those things, safety being one of those. And we can't get formal feedback from ITD or ACHD until they have a use application so that they can base their numbers and their traffic generation numbers on the actual use. And again, we can't submit that application for the use until we have this final plat approved for a lot. So tonight, as Sonia stated, this is about the single lot subdivision. We have, we share concerns with traffic and are, and look forward to addressing those as we get through ACHD and ITD submittals and feedback. I would stand for any questions that you may have regarding the application.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Walk.
And thanks for the overview. And long before this application came over, there have been concerns about the traffic on Chindon and and Black Cat. And as you drive by, the turn signal seems to be right where a turn lane would would be. So there definitely are some mitigation efforts that need to go into this. You've seen the ITD letter and I understand the explanation that you need to have the use permitted before you can have those, a traffic study, I would imagine, and then clearance to move forward from ITD and ACHD on on Black Cat. One of the concerns is just if if that traffic study comes by, comes back and indicates that not only do you need an enhanced right turn off of Chindon to go north on Black Cat, but also from Black Cat to turn westbound onto Chindon. Is that something that you would participate in with ITD?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Whitlock, yes. We anticipate getting a lot of feedback from ITD regarding all of those situations. And ACHD not only turning off of Chindon but onto Chindon, potential acceleration lane along Chindon. We do anticipate a lot of road improvements that will be generated once we can get an application in front of those jurisdictions. We've also, we'll be talking to them about how do we mitigate for some of the traffic on Black Cat between Chindon and Waverton? There's kind of a short run there. There's a center median that prevents a left turn off of Black Cat into this site. But we also want to be sensitive to the residents within the neighborhood to the north that Waverton is while it is a residential collector, there's a lot of pedestrian activity along there, a lot of kids walking around there too. So working with ACHD on how we mitigate, you know, do some traffic calming, something like that to help address that as well. So I guess that's a long answer to, yes, we plan to participate with all of the jurisdictions to improve this area.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Can we just, Ben, give us a sense for, you you talked about the neighbors to the west and that you would work to kind of mitigate some of the maybe deficiencies, my word for that barrier. Can you give me an idea what you're actually wanting to do and how that would look?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor. Right now, there's some smaller deciduous flowering trees that are along there. There's a kind of an alternating series of those with some smaller evergreens. I think as the designer and hearing some of the neighbors' concerns, I'm looking at filling those gaps with some larger evergreens. I think removing some of that lawn area would allow for an expansion of the planter bed so that we can get some larger plant material in there to really buffer not only sound but sight. And then obviously any lighting that goes in the parking lot around the building, full cutoff shields, making sure there's no light trespass as well.
Mr. Mayor, quick follow-up?
That's my turn.
A lot of times we see berms with the fence on top of the berm to give you that extra height. Some of the videos I'm seeing, that's not how it looks like it's laid out. Probably can't make any changes there because of property ownership, but I'm assuming you wouldn't be changing any fence lines. You would just be working to add more vegetation and sort of, you know, creating a shield there with just natural vegetation, is that, is that right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, that's correct. We can't move the fence. And when they built the subdivision, it looks like they built the fence on the property line and then put a berm on this property side. So I mean, we may, there's opportunity maybe to grade that down a little bit. But, you know, we're, we'll work with our civil on grading design just to keep that area as, you know, plantable as possible, I guess. But yeah, that's the intent, plant material. We can talk about fence height. It's a six foot fence. I don't think that we can go any higher based on code right now. But anything we can do to help alleviate some of those concerns, we definitely want to look at.
Counsel, additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perk, anyone want to sign up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, yes, first is Paul McLaughlin, representing an HOA.
Good evening, say your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry?
Say your name and address for the record.
Paul McLaughlin, 6811 North Maplestone in Meridian. Like was mentioned, I'm the president of the HOA for Fairborn. I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Semple before this meeting tonight, and he was able to answer some of my questions. There are other things that he brought up that would obviously make some of my questions moot because again, until things go in the right order and they get the the use permit, then traffic studies come after that. But, you know, right now, traffic is the biggest concern with the residents, not only of Fairborn, but of Spurwing and of Modern Craftsman because that that road is already insufficient at certain times of the day or certain times of the week. I think we brought up before that Rock Harbor Church pours out onto Black Cat on Sunday and they have services all day. There's, there's a total, I think, I think they are up to six services on on a typical Sunday now. And on holidays, they have Saturday services and like I said, it just pours out of there. And the concern with the traffic coming in is, first of all, there, I wanted to bring to your attention, there's a note on one of these, on the city agency comments that says, if ACHD allows the proposed access via North Black Cat, which I don't know who's proposing that because Mr. Semple has indicated he's only looking for a right turn in and right turn out. But I just want to get it on the record since I don't know if I'm going to get another bite at the apple that we absolutely would not be able to back up traffic to allow people to turn left from Black Cat into there. But if you go farther up, if you go far enough north towards Waverton, there is that center divider there and at the most, you're going to get four to maybe five cars that can get in that left turn lane. And with traffic coming out, you know, from Rock Harbor, because Waverton doesn't line up with Tree Farm. So you get all these people turning left out of Tree Farm and we've been watching the traffic the last several Sundays. And people don't stop to allow people to turn onto Waverton. They don't allow people to come from Waverton into the Modern Craftsman. And I just want to make it, put it on the record that, again, any access, at least left from northbound on Black Cat is going to be disastrous there. A right turn in, right turn out, I don't see any issues with that. You talked about, somebody talked about right turn lanes, you know, coming out of, off of Black Cat. Again, we're already at the point where, you know, that's a long signal. They they have shortened the signal cycles on Sunday to favor the people coming out for the church. But the rest of the week, you got people that are wanting to make a right turn and you got to wait a whole signal cycle there because that light is so long. It says here, you know, modify the note, note number six to not prohibit access if that's approved. And that note number six says, direct lot of parcel access to West Chindon and North Black Cat is prohibited. Access shall be from West Waverton at the previously approved and constructed approach. And that was another concern that was brought up by the residents of Fairborn at least, was that Waverton doesn't appear to be, it it doesn't have any center divider. So I don't know how people, the majority of the traffic is going to be coming off of Chindon, onto Black Cat and onto Waverton, which is going to require a left turn onto Waverton and another left turn into the lot. And it's, you know, again, that street isn't, has no lines on it. I don't know if it's even wide enough to put a center divider there. It was also brought up by Mr. Semple about the concerns, but the fact that everybody south of Waverton has to cross Waverton to get to their bus stop, the kids in the morning. And ever since they put the signal in west of us into the subdivision that they're working on, it's, we're getting an amazing amount of traffic coming through there now because people are just using it as a shortcut. So that was again, you know, Mr. Semple addressed to the degree that he could. My other concern is about, was about the right turn lane from Chindon onto northbound Black Cat. You know, what I was reading, and I apologize, I had notes on my phone and it was in an app that logged me out, so I can't get to it. But what it essentially said was that the Fairborn developer was required back in 2018 to put that right turn lane in when this was developed. And even now, today, there's, these current documents say that Fairborn is responsible for that. But if he's selling that lot, you know, there was something in there that said that because he was required to do it and he has yet to do it, that this development would not be held up because of that right turn lane. And again, we're having problems there where people got to come from 55 miles an hour down to nothing to make a very sharp turn. Because again, that's been brought up before that that intersection is not sufficient to handle the kind of traffic it's already getting. And now we're going to add a, you know, a grocery store in there and a couple others that are going to, you know, significantly add to the traffic. So there, one other concern that was brought up, and I don't know if it's anything, I can probably discuss it with Mr. Semple. I forgot to talk to him about this, but somebody was asking about possibly putting a short fence in front of the berm on the parking lot side that would prohibit people from, or at least, you know, deter them from walking up on that berm because they are going to be selling ready to eat food that the concern is people are going to go sit up on that berm and maybe eat something from the the deli inside. And and if you're sitting on that berm, even sitting down, you can see right down into those backyards. And we have eight residences that are going to be impacted by that. So as far as lowering that berm, I don't know if there was some sound issues that were taken into consideration when it was put in. And if you're increasing the privacy by reducing the berm, are you lowering the the sound mitigation? I don't know, but those were, again, concerns that were brought up by some of those homeowners that live that back up to that lot. So main thing I wanted to get across is we, I I just want to make sure I put it on the records. If I don't get another chance to talk about this, that we absolutely need the right turns coming in off of Chindon and coming out onto Chindon from Black Cat. And that we got to do something about how we're going to get, you know, depending on what the traffic counts are going to be, how we're going to mitigate this traffic with these two left turns to get into that, that shopping center, especially with all that Sunday traffic. So that's all I had. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Maybe just a comment. On an unrelated issue to this, we did have a meeting yesterday that involved ITD. And we were informed that they were putting in their plan of this decel lane for right-hand turns at this location.
Sorry, the what?
They're putting in their normal plans for construction of a decel lane at this location. It's not in a year yet or funded, but it is on their to-do list to to make that happen, whether it's through this development or through their own processes in the not, I won't say, I won't, but I won't give a timeframe, but.
Well, and that, but the concern is, like I said, that this, we're already way past the point where this is needed. It's really harrowing to have to slow down and watch your rearview mirror when you're.
Correct, I'm just informing you that they informed me yesterday that they are making that, they will get to making that put in.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Ray Perk.
Good evening, say your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, name is Ray Pierce or Perk, either way, I go by both my whole life. And live at 6560 North Oakstone. So I'm one of the lots on the west side that will back up to this development. One, I did want to focus on a couple of the positives, some of the conversations with the developer we've had is, you know, the co-op is the proposed tenant. The delivery hours was a big concern, but the delivery hours that the co-op leverages is during normal working hours, not semi trucks at night coming through, which would not even be able to fit into this lot to begin with. But that was a positive and it does meet a need. You know, they talked about in this area, nothing like this around. So I do think there is, you know, some positive sentiment from me and some of the other residents in the area. But again, some of the concerns, so the privacy aspect, the video that my wife submitted, I think you have that. I'm, that's from our backyard. So it does highlight, unfortunately for me, my doctor's chart, I'm just below six foot. And that video highlights that the fence is not quite six foot, but even I can stand and just see over the berm, which would be a parking lot, which is an eyesore, you know, to me as a homeowner. I understood this would be developed originally, which I know is not up for debate. We were told when we purchased, it would be Monday through Friday, appointment-based businesses such as doctors' offices. And now we're talking about a grocery store, which again, fits a need, but different plan to be looking out your back door to. And then also, as highlighted, if you walk up on that berm, you can see straight down to our lawn. And so my two young children sitting in the back playing, you know, people just being able to peer into our backyard like that. And the rest of the lots along that way, over half of them have small children as well. So that's been a concern of privacy for that. The other is traffic aspect, which has been talked about a lot and extensively. You know, one is Waverton on the north side, you know, we were told that's a public road. So, you know, when we talked about it being in a subdivision, it's a public road was the the term we were given during one of the original meetings. you know when we talked about it being in a subdivision it's a public road was the the term we were given during one of the original meetings but it was approved by the city to go through a subdivision and as he mentioned my sons walk across Wavereton to their bus stop all of the other kids which in that section of the neighborhood there's a high number of kids all around the same age that's how we walk to our community pool to our community playground to their friends' houses so we talked about you know with the developer be willing to pay put in a a lighted crosswalk we were told speed bumps weren't an option but again this is a road that goes through a subdivision with amenities that we in residence pay for and as mentioned further down Chindon at Levi I believe there was a a light recently put in since that has been put in there is more traffic that detours through Wavereton to bypass the traffic on Chindon and the cars do not follow speed limit some of them 40 50 miles an hour there's been some close calls with some residents and so putting a grocery store in here increasing traffic on that people taking Wavereton from the grocery store because the right turn and then right turn onto Chindon will back up and then again the Rock Harbor aspect I go to Rock Harbor love the fact that there's such a demand for people to go to church but we have seen the traffic back up beyond Costco going down Chindon during service hours if I've been coming back from Fred Meyer and there's people if you look on the map there's like a dirt where they would turn into the grocery store on Sundays from my backyard I watch people park along there and then walk to Rock Harbor so I you know inform the developer that on Sunday he'll likely have a parking lot full of people walking to Rock Harbor which I just think further highlights there is some congestion so again it meets a need but one that we want to ensure protects the safety of first of all our children but the residents as a whole thank you
Thank you council any questions?
Mr. Mayor
Councilman Cavan
It's Ray
Yep
Right?
Yep
Ray thanks for your testimony
Yep
Help me understand you and your wife at the planning and zoning commission we've got her email your three videos which I appreciate our clerk putting them up so everybody could see them the request before the council tonight is very narrow
Hmm
What is it your what is your hope that the council does tonight based on what what is requested before us this evening?
So will we understand that there's a grocery store proposal and that it would be to approve this development to then go to considerations for the traffic? Is that that off okay?
I and I think if it would be helpful and I I know that they probably touched on this a little bit at planning and zoning I didn't watch it I just I read the minutes but it seemed that maybe they moved past that a little bit more quickly
Okay
A decision about a grocery store is not a decision that's before the council
Hmm
this evening what we're really looking at is is a lot line and a property adjustment and so it's not a case of do we want grocery stores do we not want grocery stores? should this come in as as retail or as commercial or something different? It's we're really at a at a preliminary and a final plat stage and so that's I just I want to make sure you and your your family have invested a lot of your time
Yeah
participate in the process
So
And so trying to make sure that we are I I wanna I I'm hearing everything that you're saying but I'm also trying to wrestle that with what decision I as a council member can and cannot make this evening?
Could you provide more clarity than on the decision tonight?
What I'd like to do sorry Mr. Mayor
Councilman Cavan
Is Ray if you're comfortable is is let's get through the the rest of the public testimony and then I'll ask our our staff our planning staff so I don't screw it up
Yeah
You'll lay out again specifically what the decisions are before the city council this evening just the way we're hearing the same information that you're hearing at all at the same time
Okay well I mean to be clear that the decision made about the lot and we're expressing concerns about a proposed plan so
I appreciate it thank you
Council any additional questions?
And Mr. Mayor we have Mason Perk Mason Pierce sorry Mason you can pull either of those microphones down to you
Hi my name is Mason my dad I'm living in the same house um just one of the things all my friends come over to my house and we hit the baseballs over the fence and we hit everything out of the fence and like people are parking like what would we do if we shattered in whole entire car like what would we do if that happened? So it's like can we hire a fence or anything or like I don't know like what to do like it's like all my friends like I'm going to the bus stop and then right after school I'm walking back and there's some cars just rolling and I'm trying to cross back to home and they're probably going like 60 miles an hour and it just scares me like I don't know if I'm gonna get hit and there's some traffic like we go to this gas station over here it's pretty far like when it's when the building is like open like and on church days we probably go sometimes like what like I just wanna know like how are we gonna just transfer like all of these places we go and there's about like 20 kids in our neighborhood that just hang out and all that stuff and I just don't know what to do with my friends and just like get if they're hurt and that happens sometimes when a car almost hits us and it just scares me so bad thank you
Thank you very much I think it's gonna start with a wolf a ball bat for Christmas will be the first things because you're just gonna get bigger and hit that ball further so we're gonna have to cut down on that Councilman Cavan
Mason how old are you?
Eight
Eight?
Hmm
Third grade?
Hmm
Listen Mason I've been sitting up here for almost 12 years and we hear a lot of testimony you've done some of the best work I've heard from anybody who's ever provided public testimony so in 10 years when you're ready to run for city council you give me a call I'd be happy to make a donation to your campaign you're doing a great job being a great advocate for your family and your neighborhood I appreciate you being here
Mr. Mayor
Councilman Taylor
Just ask a question I don't know if there's a fence that could keep your balls in but how high of a fence would we need to keep those homerun balls in your yard? 20 feet 30 feet what do you think?
20 would be fine
Okay good put that on the record please
Thank you Nathan appreciate it
Mr. Mayor there's everyone that signed up in advance
Okay is there anybody present who would like to provide testimony on this item either in the room or online if you're online use the raise your hand feature and if you're in the room go ahead and come on up to the mic seeing no one raising their hand online or coming forward the applicant come forward to close
Thank you Mr. Mayor members of council Ben Semple with Rodney Evans and Partners 1450 West Bannack Street Boise it's a hard act to follow there I I really appreciate that feedback you know and and I I started at the top here with with Paul's questions and comments I just want to reinforce we are not proposing changing the access on northbound Black Cat we're not proposing a left hand off of northbound Black Cat that would cause some major issues of backing up into that intersection at Chindon I will we will be talking with ACHD about it looks like there's room to widen Black Cat slightly especially as you approach the intersection there and then we'll also talk with them about the light timing I know that when they develop intersections that have more development around their intersections and light timing they work on that to help move traffic a little more efficiently so hopefully that light cycle isn't as long so there's not as many people stopped stacking to turn definitely be talking to them about striping on Wavereton primarily for traffic movement so that customers for this development as well as residents have a little bit more visibility of how they should be navigating that area and happy to talk to them about a crosswalk you know safety of of school kids here is paramount you know we I raised both my kids in in the Treasure Valley and you know I I would not want them to have to deal with you know almost getting hit by a car that that would scare me too the DA that is currently enforceable includes uses restaurant retail sales store including grocery personal service office professional service office healthcare services or financial services none of those are off the table because of this and so there could be that these two other pads are appointment eight to five I also know in talking with the co-op individuals and I was glad to hear the neighbor had had heard that too is that their deliveries are primarily daytime hours operating hours and they use mostly Sprinter vans so smaller vehicles they might have a smaller trailer truck that comes there periodically but that is not their primary deliveries the ITD turn lane once we submit will be provided with here's your proportionate share for this and hopefully with that funding maybe ITD can accelerate their timeframe for installing that right turn lane at minimum the you know again planting trees to help with that buffer along there I'll try to get some tall trees you know over 20 feet tall I'll get some varieties that are pretty dense so stop some baseballs at least for now yeah and and again just really work with these jurisdictions out here on safety in this area you know vehicular and pedestrian safety and then one other thing briefly that Paul mentioned definitely be working with my client about a secondary fence on that berm it would it would be open vision because I don't want to propose something that creates this tunnel that people could hide behind but open vision fencing to prevent people accessing that berm or that buffer area I also know that the co-op intends to have an outdoor space immediately adjacent to their building and the space where they do the ready to eat food that'll include a patio space as well as some landscaped areas so people could sit there rather than right next to somebody's fence ultimately really feel good about this project I know that's just the preliminary final plat tonight so there's gonna be a lot of other opportunity I believe we have a neighborhood meeting with CCC for something like this and so I'll be working with my client his architect and everyone else to to keep working with the HOA and neighbors to really hopefully make a great addition to their neighborhood so they don't have to walk as far to a gas station or or some other you know business to get what they need I'd happy to stand for any additional questions you might have
Thank you council any additional questions for the applicant
Mayor
Councilman Whitlock
I don't know if we can call up the Google map but I'm I'm looking on Google map and can you just help me understand and I'm gonna butcher this is it Carriganah Street is that intended to be a through street through this parcel from the neighborhood to the west from Fairborn?
Uh Mr. Mayor Councilmember Whitlock no that's an emergency only access it's ballarded at the west side at that fence line that goes into that neighborhood that's their secondary connection because they I believe they have over 30 lots in there so they needed a secondary point that emergency access will remain open and accessible by emergency services now during construction after construction nothing to impact the ability if if something happened that needed to be accessed that way
Okay thank you
Mr. Mayor
Councilman Taylor
I really question as much as a comment but I really appreciate you your comments about working with the HOA the neighbors on some of the privacy concerns with those neighbors on the west I'd strongly encourage you to work directly with even the neighbors and take some of their input as some of their ideas not just what you think would be best but kind of incorporate some of the ideas that they have I think would be well received by them to ensure their privacy because I could I'm certainly sympathetic if I lived there the ability for someone to walk up on a berm and look down on my kids I've got four kids I would not appreciate that either even though I understand living in a in a community so strongly encourage you to do that it sounds like you are and I appreciate that
Thank you
Okay thank you very much
Thank you
Sonia would you like to answer answer Councilman Cavan's query for him and the audience?
Yes Mr. Mayor council so a preliminary and final plat is basically a survey document it subdivides the land in this case all of the land around it was subdivided through a final plat and recorded which left this remnant piece which was not a legal division of land and we couldn't issue a building permit for it because of that so this is just a a way to basically subdivide the property and and make it a a legal parcel for development purposes
Mr. Mayor
So if I let me let me expand just a little bit more on the uses so with the previous Fairborn development at that time that's what gave the property the current zoning which allows for the proposed uses as principal permitted uses in the zone so as such the proposed uses won't be back before you through another application it'll be a staff level approved application so the the use is not in question tonight that use was essentially approved with the zoning of the property several years ago
Mr. Mayor
Councilman Cavan
Saying this but if I were to say man I I don't like a grocery store there not a decision for the city council to make tonight correct?
That is correct
Thank you Sonia appreciate it
The time to consider that would have been when the zoning was approved for the property thank you
Mr. Mayor
Councilman Cavan
See anybody asking for any additional questions so I'll move that we close the public hearing on item number two application H dash 2025 dash 0036
Have a motion second to close the public hearing is there any discussion? If not on favor certified by saying aye
Aye
Pose nay the ayes have it the public thing is closed
Mr. Mayor
Councilman Cavan
For some quick deliberation I appreciate when neighbors get involved in the process and it's I know it's frustrating when you want to come and say we'd like X to occur and it's not a decision that the city council can can necessarily make on this particular evening I I am reassured that we've got a great applicant who has a pretty good track history in Meridian about falling through on the things that they say they're going to do and so you know can't promise right that every every request no 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 green mile in North Meridian is gonna be built but I really trust that the applicant is gonna do their best and we've got a good community partner that wants to build here so because of of what is before us Mr. Mayor I'm going to move that we approve application H dash 2025 dash 0036 as presented the staff report on the date of October 21st 2025 include all staff applicant and public testimony
Have a motion second to approve item two which is H 2025 dash 0036 is there discussion on the motion? If not clerk call the roll
Thank you Mr. Mayor Cavan
Aye
Little Roberts
Aye
Taylor
Aye
Overton Whitlock
Aye
All ayes motion carries and the item is agreed to thank you very much Next item up is item three which is a public hearing for Pine 43 mixed use subdivision H 2024 dash 0071 we will open this public hearing with staff comments
Thank you Mr. Mayor members of the council there are several applications associated with this next project and I'll just go through those the first is a combined preliminary and final plat a development agreement modification excuse me I think that that is thank you that I don't know how that got on my outline but that is not correct so disregard that development agreement modification annexation rezone preliminary plat conditional use permit for a multi-family development on lot two block one with alternative compliance to UDC 11 4327 B3 conditional use permit for a multi-family development on lot two block three with alternative compliance to UDC 11 4327 B3 and to UDC 11 2B3 and conditional use permit for a height exception on lot two block two additionally alternative compliance is requested from the director to UDC table 11 2B3 to allow an increase in the maximum building height in the CG district from 65 to 76 feet on lots one through three block four and lot two block three and that's the hotel the multi-family residential building at the southwest corner of Webb and Pine and two vertically integrated residential buildings and to UDC 11 4341G which requires a minimum of 50 square feet of private usable open space per unit for the vertically integrated residential developments to allow studio units without such space the director has tentatively approved the alternative compliance requests for increased building height contingent upon city council's approval of the associated land uses including building height so the the alternative compliances that are before council tonight are the ones associated with the conditional use permit the other ones are director level decisions this site consists of 36.58 acres of land it's currently zoned R8 in Ada County and CG in the city it's generally located on the north and south sides of East Pine Avenue between North Locust Grove Road and North Hickory Avenue this property was annexed with CG zoning back in 2008 with a preliminary plat for Pine Bridge subdivision which consists of of approximately 170 acres of land a development agreement was required as a provision of annexation the conceptual development plan for the site depicted 3 million square feet of commercial light office and multi-family residential uses and a medical campus and included the property that is now the Sensi Commons Campus located east of North Machine Avenue Subsequent amendments to the development agreement were approved in 2011 and 2021. Which each removed portions of the 50 acre Sensi property east of Machine Avenue from the agreement. In 2017, another amendment to the development agreement was approved, which updated the conceptual master plan for the site. And certain provisions in the agreement, along with a rezone of 59 acres of land from the C G to the R 15 and R 40 zoning districts. On the portion of the site north of State Avenue. The updated plan included commercial components of office and retail and a variety of residential housing types consisting of single family residential detached and attached homes. Townhomes and multi-family residential apartments on 120 acres of land. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for the Pine 43 site is mixed use community. And it is general industrial for the H P C buyer site. Annexation and zoning of 7.21 acres of land is requested with I L zoning, which consists of 5.29 acres and C G zoning. Which consists of 1.36 acres and our 15 zoning, which consists of point 5.6 of an acre. Uh, for the property surrounding the parcel at the northeast corner of Locust Grove and Pine. So that is this area, um, right here with the hatch line. The future land use map designation for this property is general industrial. Because future land use map designations are not parcel specific and adjacent abutting designation when appropriate and approved as part of a public hearing with a land development application. May be used as long as it doesn't apply to more than 50% of the land being developed. The applicant is proposing to use the abutting mixed use community designation on 1.92 acres of the north and northeast portions of the annexation area. Where our 15 and C G zoning is proposed. Staff is supportive of this request as it's less than 50% of the land being developed and will accommodate the proposed development plan. The H P C buyer applicant owns the property in business, Har- Harvey Performance Company located at the southwest corner of the annexation area. And plans to eventually expand the business into the 5.29 acre portion of the property to be zoned I L. The remaining 1.92 acres is planned to be incorporated into the adjacent Pine 43 development through a future property boundary adjustment. Uh, once the property is annexed, which will resolve a deeded parcel split that occurred previously between the subject property owners that didn't go through the proper process. A conceptual, um, development plan and phasing plan and building elevations were submitted as shown that show how the existing industrial business on the abutting pro- um, parcel is eventually planned to expand into the I L zoned area in the future. Four phases of development are proposed with a parking area and access driveways via Pine Avenue and Locust Grove Road. And a shared access via Pine with the adjacent property to the east. The concept plan also shows how the areas proposed to be zoned R 15 and C G will integrate into the adjacent development. Access points to adjacent streets are not approved with the concept plan and will be evaluated with future development applications. To ensure future development is consistent with the proposed plan, staff recommends a development agreement is required as a provision of annexation of the property proposed to be zoned I L. That includes the provisions noted in the staff report. The 1.92 acres proposed to be zoned R 15 and C G will be included in the proposed amended development agreement for Pine 43. A property boundary adjustment application should be submitted and finalized prior to city council approval of the amended development agreement. To create the parcel subject to the development agreement and to transfer ownership of the property. A rezone of 3.8, 3.08 acres, um, consisting of two parcels, um, point nine one and point, excuse me, and point. Geez, I cannot talk tonight. 2.17 acres of land. From the C G to the R 15 district is proposed for the future development of 17 townhomes. The proposed zoning use and density is consistent with the mixed use community development guidelines. The overall density of the area proposed to be zoned R 15 between the annexation and the rezone applications. Just 3.59 acres excluding, um. Right away and developed with, um, 30 dwelling units is 8.36 units per acre. Which is consistent with the desired density of six to 15 units per acre in M U C designated areas. The development agreement modification concurrently proposed with this application will include the subject rezone area. A, uh, development agreement modification is proposed to amend the existing approved conceptual development plan shown on the left. For the undeveloped 36.58 acres of the site located south of East State Avenue. Depicted as areas E, F and G. And that is the, um, dashed red outline areas. Um, and it does include the areas that are just outlined in red. Uh, which have already developed with non-residential commercial uses. This area is currently entitled to develop entirely with commercial uses. An updated concept master plan is proposed as shown on the right. The applicant proposes to develop a large portion of the commercial area with 904 new residential dwelling units consisting of 30 townhome dwelling units. A total of 270 multi-family residential apartment units. And a maximum of 604 vertically integrated residential units above ground floor, non-residential space. This is an increase of 880 dwelling units. Over what is currently entitled to develop in Pine 43 and that is already built out. The remaining area is proposed to develop with 481,020 square feet of non-residential space. Including a proposed 128,880 square foot hotel with a restaurant, lounge and a conference area. And 71,800 square feet of other retail and restaurant commercial space. 221,340 square feet of office space, 90,000, uh, square feet of which is intended for med tech. I E. Medical office, research and technology uses. And 59,000 square feet of commercial office in the vertically integrated residential buildings. This is an increase of 134,020 square feet of non-residential space over what is currently entitled. Which is not yet built out in Pine 43. Conceptual renderings of the, um, overall development were submitted as shown. I'll just go through those and let you look real quick here. A revised overall open space exhibit was submitted as shown that depicts a total of 9.23 acres or 25% of the site. Of private and public open space, including developed green spaces, amenities and a 41,464 square foot centralized public plaza. A pedestrian connectivity plan was submitted as shown. Staff is generally supportive of the portion of the proposed, um, concept plan north of Pine as it provides a mix of uses as desired for mixed use community designated areas. However, staff, um, staff is concerned the proposed amendment would substantially reduce the amount of land designated for employment generating uses. Which may in turn limit future opportunities for family wage jobs in the area. Staff and A C H D have significant concerns pertaining to the traffic impact the proposed changes to the concept master plan will have on the surrounding transportation network beyond what was originally anticipated. The applicant's traffic engineer submitted a memo. That includes additional and updated analysis for the proposed development. A comparison of trip generation, uh, between the previously approved land uses south of State Avenue from the approved 2017 traffic impact study and the proposed land use changes are included in the memo. And those are in the public record and included in the staff report. For these reasons, it's staff's opinion, the previously entitled development plan for commercial uses in the area south of Pine where multi-family residential and vertically integrated residential uses are proposed. Is in the best interest of the city to retain as it provides needed employment opportunities and services for nearby residents while also reducing vehicle trips and supporting trip capture. Additionally, it's staff's opinion, the vertically integrated residential use on lot one, block one. I'll just back up to the concept plan here. And that is, um, on this lot here at the southeast corner of the development. Staffs are the opinion that it's not compatible with adjacent industrial uses and operations to the south. Industrial operations typically produce impacts such as noise, vibration, light pollution and emissions. Which can negatively impact, um, health, safety and overall livability of nearby residential environments. The commission did not agree with staff's recommendation and did recommend approval of the proposed development plan with no changes. A preliminary plat is proposed consisting of 41 buildable lots and three common lots on 36.58 acres of land in the R 15 and C G zoning districts. The plat is proposed to develop in eight phases as shown on the phasing plan on the right. The northwest portion of the preliminary plat includes portions of the existing county parcels that will be included in a future property boundary adjustment application. With adjacent city zone parcels, once the property is annexed with this application. If a property boundary adjustment isn't approved and a record or survey recorded, this would create an illegal division of land if a final plat were recorded. For this, uh, reason, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat is contingent upon final approval of a property boundary adjustment application. For the realignment of property lines between the H P C buyer and the D R B investments properties as shown on the preliminary plat. A final plat application should not be submitted to the planning division until a property boundary adjustment application is finalized and a record or survey is recorded. That matches the configuration of the property shown on the preliminary plat. In the event a property boundary adjustment is not finalized, a new preliminary plat application. Would be required that excludes the land anticipated to be included in the property boundary adjustment. The conditions of approval in the staff are currently cover all of this. So no worries on, um, including any of that in your, in your decision. A landscape plan, um, showing required street buffer landscaping for the development was submitted as shown. Two conditional use permits are proposed for a multi-family residential development in the C G district on lot two, block one and lot two, block three. And, um, let's see, I'll go back to the concept plan real quick and show you which ones those were. So it's this one here at the southwest corner of Pine. And then the other one here on the south side of Pine and, um, just west of Machine Avenue. The one on lot two, block one includes 139 units on 2.87 acres of land and the one on lot two, block three includes 132 units on 3.4 acres of land. Between the two developments, a total of 271 apartment units are proposed in the area currently entitled to develop with commercial uses. Alternative compliance is requested with the conditional use permits to U D C 11, four, three, two, seven. B three, which requires a minimum of 80 square feet of private usable. Open space, um, to be provided for each multi-family residential unit to allow zero for all sto- uh, studio units. As alternative compliance, the, uh, applicant is proposing private rooftop amenity decks. Which will be available to all residents in the buildings. But will likely be used the most by residents of studio units since they have the least space to host groups of visitors. And those are shown on the color drawings there before you. This request is to be considered by council as part of the conditional use permit request. A similar request was submitted to the private usable open space standards for vertically integrated residential units, which requires a minimum of 50 square feet of private area. Which the director has approved contingent upon council's approval of the proposed development plan. Alternative compliance is also requested to U D C table 11, two, B three. Which restricts building height to a maximum of 65 feet in the C G zoning district to allow maximum building height. Of 76 feet on lot two, block three. Again, that was the building at the southwest corner of, um, Pine and Webb. An additional 10% of the building square footage is proposed to be provided in open space courtyards, patios or other usable outdoor space as required for such requests. This request is to be considered by city council as part of the conditional use permit request. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the proposed multi-family residential structures as shown. A conditional use permit is proposed. For a height exception to U D C table 11, two, B three. For the vertically integrated residential building on lot two, block two, as shown at the, um, northeast corner of Pine and Webb. To allow, um, or excuse me, to exceed the maximum building height allowed of 65 feet in the C G district to allow maximum height of 87 feet. This would be an increase of 34% in the maximum building height in the C G district. The applicant states additional height is needed to accommodate vertical integration of uses and the appropriate urban density to support mixed use and sustainability. By allowing for urban density that can support the commercial and office uses in the development consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff is generally in support of the proposed height exception as justified by the applicant and is of the opinion it's appropriate for the proposed development. And is consistent with the comprehensive plan. However, the city council should consider if reducing the number of residential units proposed above the first floor is necessary in order to accommodate more employment and service uses. To support residential uses in this area and to reduce vehicle trips and encourage more trip capture as conditions of approval. The commission did recommend approval of the subject applications and I'll go through a summary of the commission hearing. Deborah Nelson, um, Givens Persley testified in favor. She's representing the applicant. Tammy Deverde, Ian Tompkins, Danielle Strollo, uh, Givens Persley, um. Duggan Henderson, Beg, uh, from Harvey Performance Company, all testified in favor of the application. Garrett Schultz and Brian Farnsworth commented on the application and there was no written testimony. Key issues of public testimony was as follows. Uh, in favor of the proposed mix of uses, but against the scale of the development as it's way out of proportion for this location and with the residential homes to the north. Against the proposed height of structures in the development and the transition to existing sa- single family residential homes to the north. Desire for a shadow study to be conducted to determine the impact of the height of the proposed structures on the adjacent single family homes. Concerns pertaining to the amount of additional traffic the development will create and the light and noise pollution impacts on the residents to the north. Opinion that proposed mixed use development provides benefits of walkability, viability and long-term economic strength and contributes towards a diverse housing stock. Employment, supported uses of pedestrian infrastructure and high-quality public spaces which aligns with the comprehen- comprehensive plan goals. In favor of the proposed development, including building heights. Question pertaining to if the proposed development would be part of the existing homeowners association. The answer was no. Um, H P C is in support of the housing and hotel uses proposed that will help their employment base as well as nearby commercial opportunities the development will provide. Key issues of discussion by the commission were as follows. Proposed building heights and transitions to existing single family residential homes to the north and proposed townhome units within the development along State Avenue. Opinion that proposed development fits well in this area and will provide nice amenities. Contemplated the type of, um, commercial uses in the vertically integrated residential building specifically in block one. Transition to the south, um, between residential and industrial uses and specific mitigation plans in place for noise. Transition in height from the residential homes to the north across David Avenue to the proposed development to the south. Specifically the vertically integrated residential building on lot one, block four. To provide greater privacy to the residential lots to the north. Not comfortable with the fire department's response that they can't adequately provide service for their proposed development, although the structures will be sprinkled. Not in support of removing the condition that requires the animal farm plat to be recorded. Prior to submission of a final plat application for this development. And, uh, lastly, although residential uses are proposed to increase in this area, so are commercial uses. The commercial, uh, excuse me, the commission made the following change to the staff recommendation. They were in favor of the residential uses south of Pine and requirement for the shadow study to be submitted prior to the city council hearing. Um, approval includes requirement of enhanced construction materials for sound mitigation as offered by the applicant. For the vertically integrated building on lot one, block one. And include conditions of approval of conditional use permit. They weren't originally included because staff was recommending denial of the conditional use permits for multi-family. And meet open space standards for multi-family residential buildings at the southwest corner of Pine and Webb on lot two, block three. For an increase in the building height. The applicant has submitted an updated open space exhibit, um, for that lot that, uh, does comply with the extra open space that's required for the additional building height. The applicant has also, um. Submitted an overall exhibit for the public and quasi-public space for the overall development as well as, um, just that portion south of state. And they are, um, demonstrating compliance with, uh, um, guidelines in the comprehensive plan. They have also submitted an exhibit as shown here for the vertically integrated residential building next to the industrial uses at the southeast corner of the development. They're, um, proposing a 10-foot wide, um, landscape buffer with dense, um, evergreen trees along. They're proposing a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer with dense evergreen trees along that boundary and an eight-foot-tall wall. And they've also submitted a shadow study at different times of the year. Run through those. So that's the most impactful here at winter solstice time. Outstanding issue for council. It's really not an outstanding issue, just a comment that the director will issue findings for the alternative compliance request for the building height based on council's action on the increased building height in the discussion at the public hearing tonight. Written testimony since the commission hearing has been received from Kathy Crowley. She is opposed to the proposed development. Her letter is in the public testimony file. Staff is recommending at the applicant's request that council remove condition number three F requiring the final plat for Animal Farm to be recorded prior to the final plat application for any phase of this development. The reason why is because the final plat for Animal Farm has been approved by council. City engineer has signed the plat, and it is just waiting to be recorded. We're hoping that the applicant will go ahead and do that. I have reached out to them. Don't think I have received a response back on that. But they were checking with the owner to see when that would be done and if there was a, what the holdup was on it. So hopefully we can get that taken care of quickly. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Council, any questions? I know that was a lot.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
This is kind of a question for maybe fire. Do we have any concerns with the exceptions we're requesting on the height of the buildings?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Taylor, I don't, I don't have any concern specifically with the, the height exceptions. Prescript, I believe they would still have to meet the building and fire code once it went to was submitted.
Council, any additional questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor, no questions. I just, I've got a quick comment before we hear from the applicant.
Councilman Kev.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, just want to make you all aware, it's probably a year or two ago, Mayor DeVird reached out to me to ask me to meet with the applicant to talk about their new visioning for the area. I can't recall if what is before us is exactly matches what they, provided they had no open application at the time. During that course of the conversation, I conveyed feedback from our public about concern about impact on schools, roads, and just maybe the general feeling from our community about too many multifamily, too many apartments in Meridian. They didn't have an open application at the time. I prepared to participate this evening, but if anybody on council feels it'd be best for me to recuse myself, I'm happy to do that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Lo Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, and council, I should also disclose that I met with Mayor Tammy and went over the plan and the plot as well. To be honest with you, it's been close to when I was just back on council and honestly couldn't tell you if there's any changes between or not. And I'm happy to recuse if we need to as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
To make it a majority of our council this evening, I did, was contacted by former mayor Tammy DeVird and asked to meet with the applicant, look at this proposed project somewhere in the future. And that was at least, I want to say, over a year ago. And it was so big at that time, I can't tell you exactly if it's what we're looking at tonight, but it was long before anything was submitted to the city officially.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Willock.
Shortly after being appointed to the city council, I sat down with former mayor DeVird and just talked concept at the time. There was not an application before the city, but just a discussion about what possibly could be envisioned here. So that was the extent of the discussion.
I, I too sat down with the applicant before this was submitted to the city, and so unfamiliar with the concept, but unless something really weird happens tonight, I won't be involved in any decision-making process one way or the other, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
Left out. I was not contacted by anybody. I guess I get to make the decision tonight.
All right, with that, with the applicant, I'd like to come forward.
Mayor, before we begin, may I have 20 minutes? As you can tell, there's a lot going on here.
You may.
Thank you.
We'll go and take a break for 20 minutes and reconvene at 7:45? Oh, oh, you want 20 minutes of time?
Oh, for the presentation.
Yes. Yes, sorry, I thought you need 20 minutes.
Thank you also for that accommodation, that was nice.
Yeah. Yes. We'll probably want to break after you're done.
Probably.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Deborah Nelson. My address is 601 West Banix Street in Boise. I'm a land use attorney with Givens Persley. Here on behalf of the applicant, we have many members of our applicant team here tonight and available to answer your questions. Much thanks to Sonya. You can tell from her recitation of the applications, this is a very complex, involved project, and it has taken a lot of work from staff to work through application details and issues, and we're very appreciative of their efforts. Dennis and Matt Baker and the entire DMB company's team have been planning this project for four years, and they've put their heart and souls into it. They look at this as a legacy project, and they want to leave something lasting and quality in Meridian. Sonya summarized everything very well, so I'm going to try to focus on the highlights of the new Pine 43 design and what is different from what is approved now in the 2018 approval, and how we meet the comprehensive plan. Just briefly, the site includes 37 acres around the intersection of Pine and Webb. It's close to downtown and the Village. And the application brings forward a vibrant, integrated, mixed-use urban community to this, this strategically-located site. The infill location provides for the efficient delivery of services and minimizes vehicle trips. There are multiple parks, schools, libraries, healthcare facilities, retail, grocery, churches, fitness studios, and daycares in the area. Just within a one-mile radius, which is shown within the red circle, there are two grocery stores, four daycares, four schools, multiple healthcare facilities, multiple fitness facilities, and Centennial Park, plus many others just outside that mile radius. Utilities are stubbed to the site. The developer has already improved the surrounding roads with prior phases, and fire station number one is less than one and a half miles away and is equipped with a ladder truck. The site supports dense development here because it's close to two activity centers, and it's served by existing transit with an active bus route through the site. In addition, the rail corridor shown in the dashed orange here is just to the south, which is planned for future passenger rail. This application changes what was effectively planned as a surface-parked, single-use office park on 37 acres, now a very dated concept. And it's changed into a thoughtfully-planned and modern mixed-use community. By going up, we can add a range of needed housing, including executive homes, workforce housing, student housing, and vertically-integrated spaces, while also increasing and maintaining non-residential uses and space. This mix of housing is missing in this area, and this project will fill the void left by nearby developments like the Village, who initially envisioned vertically-integrated housing but didn't deliver that. Pine 43 is supported by major medtech players. ICOM, ISU, and the Meridian Chamber are behind this project because the mixed-use nature and quality design of Pine 43 will help attract medtech businesses and the talent that they need to succeed. These images really showcase why the P&amp;Z commissioners referred to this as bold, different than the usual application, and the crown jewel. It's beautifully designed. There is no sea of asphalt, thanks to the developer's significant investment in underground and podium parking. It features a signature public plaza, tree-lined pathways, numerous public and quasi-public gathering spaces, upscale amenities, and activated street fronts. Exactly what the city has set it wants in its urban core. The project meets compass and comprehensive plan goals, infill, transit, mixed-use, jobs, housing, sustainability, and connectedness. And it builds on existing quality. It is located near some of the highest-quality development in the city with Cincy and Blue Cross in the medical corridor, and this project doesn't dilute it, it extends it with more services to support those existing uses. This application modifies what was originally called Pine Bridge and was approved in 2008, so this has been a, a long project in the making. Pine Bridge covered 170 acres and included a mix of residential and non-residential uses. It included the 50-acre Cincy campus in the southeast. Since then, Cincy has built 567,000 square feet of office and manufacturing space with room for more expansion. The DA was modified in 2018 to introduce a new concept plan on the remaining 120 acres with changes in the residential and non-residential uses to meet then-market demand. The area north of State Street is largely built out now. Market support for the Pine Bridge uses has continued to evolve since that 2018 DA. Housing demand has dramatically increased, and while demand for general office parks has declined, demand is high for urban-style, mixed-use development that combines commercial and office spaces with conveniently-located housing beyond the traditional, single-family detached homes. So that brings us to today, where this application reimagines the unbuilt 37 acres south of state into an integrated, mixed-use community with 904 residential units and a variety of residential products, and 481,000 square feet of non-residential space, including commercial, office, medtech uses, and a hotel with integrated lounge, retail, restaurants, and conference area. This table summarizes the history that I just described. The highlighted column in the center shows what is approved now within the original 170-acre site. The highlighted column on the right side shows the total uses if you approve this application. The difference is shown in red at the far right. This application adds 880 residential units to the existing approvals by adding vertically. And it also adds 134,000 square feet of non-residential square feet, made up of a slight increase in commercial, a slight decrease in office, new non-residential space in the vertically-integrated buildings that could be commercial or office, and a new hotel use. So rather than replacing non-residential with residential, it's additive of both by adding vertically and densely. Want to highlight just some features of Pine 43, starting with the well-designed open space throughout the site. The project's signature design feature that I mentioned is its 41,000-square-foot, nearly-one-acre public plaza. This unique space provides a gathering area for residents and employees within this development and the surrounding area. The plaza includes seating and public amenities space and is surrounded by restaurants, the hotel, and other non-residential uses in the first floor of the vertically-integrated building. Open space and site amenities are provided to meet residential requirements for the townhome lots and for the multifamily uses. Pine 43 provides approximately 260,000 square feet, or nearly six acres, of common open space for residential units in the multifamily and vertically-integrated buildings, and offers residential amenities, including fitness centers, six pools, outdoor kitchens, barbecues, picnic areas, bike storage, EV parking, sports courts, and green open space. Over 10% of the site includes public and quasi-public space to serve the community. These spaces will contain seating areas and art features, providing for social connection and interaction, plus intentional landscaping for connection to nature in an urban space. These are some of the examples of design features for these spaces, reflecting the project's emphasis on placemaking to make residents and employees feel more connected and to really activate the streetscape and the uses. Pine 43 extends and enhances the city's premier Pine Avenue bike corridor and adds new connectivity for bikes and pedestrians in and around the site. Pathways and sidewalks are included throughout, providing connections among the multiple uses in the project. The red circle here depicts a quarter-mile radius from the plaza in the center of the site, illustrating the walkability of the development. Pine 43 includes extensive parking, 174 spaces more than is required for all of the uses within the site. Remarkably, this includes over 500 spaces in an underground parking garage that covers most of block four and serves the hotel, restaurants, and residents in that block. Additionally, the vertically-integrated and multifamily buildings in the other parts of the project include podium parking, all to avoid a sea of surface parking and at significant expense to the developer for incredible quality and urban design. Pine 43 also provides extensive bike parking amounting to 50% of all vehicle parking. The applicant met with ACHD about the proposed changes in this application, and ACHD determined a new traffic study was not needed because the change in trip generation is not significant. All levels of service continue to be met on surrounding roads, and the developer already made the required road improvements around the site with earlier stages of the development. ACHD did require additional pedestrian improvements, which have been included. City staff requested additional traffic analysis of the trip generation for the new uses, so the project traffic engineer Kittleson prepared a technical memorandum summarizing the change in trip generation, which now incorporates comments from ACHD. The study with ACHD's comments shows that the net change in peak hour trips with this application over the 2018 approval is 130 more AM trips and 165 more PM peak trips. So to provide context for these numbers, Kittleson points out that the changes associated with this application are less than 10% of the total volumes entering the site, and well within the typical variation of traffic volume from day to day. Pine 43 is aligned with the comprehensive plan in multiple ways. The mixed-use community designation calls for three different land uses to be functionally integrated, and calls for residential uses at a minimum of 20% and up to 65% for sites next to transit, as this one is. Pine 43 checks all of the boxes on the MUC designation with the mix of uses, including residential within these ranges, true horizontal and vertical integration of those uses, all incorporated within a common design scheme with limited surface parking, public gathering spaces, and multimodal transportation. Staff's recommendation to remove residential entirely south of Pine would segregate uses, not integrate them, as called for in the comp plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission rejected that recommendation and was supportive of the density because it supports transit and because it supports area businesses, and it supports the needed commercial. Pine 43 is aligned with the comprehensive plan's specific housing goals in the plan by providing multiple housing types for diversity and density adjacent to public transit, downtown, and employment centers. And we're aligned with the specific comprehensive plan goals related to mixed use by providing a mix of employment and retail uses to serve residents without the need to get in their car, creating a livable and walkable village within a city. Vertical integration of uses adds significant value because it maximizes the use of land, adding needed residential without giving up non-residential. The vertical integration also builds into the, in the complementary uses that are needed for success of the project. Without dense residential, you don't get commercial, and without residential and commercial, you don't have successful office. Pine 43's mix of uses leads to a higher level of trip capture. Pine 43's mix of uses leads to a higher level of trip capture than in other developments. And the urban density and mix of uses is compatible with and supports the surrounding light, industrial, and office uses and provides new commercial uses to serve surrounding residents. Staff raised concerns with compatibility to the adjacent light industrial uses. As was mentioned again tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission accepted input from the developer regarding that particular southeast area, including to add additional glass protection for noise and to add an eight-foot wall, masonry fence in that location, and significant landscaping. And so, and also, when we pointed out the distances of 105 feet between the two buildings and the type of uses that were to the light and in the light industrial zone just south of that vertically-integrated, the commission was satisfied with those with those comments about compatibility. We have significant support from our area organizations, educational institutions. Pine 43 has received several letters of support from the entities that are listed here. They support the addition of a hotel and a convention space in their area. They recognize the need for an attractive mix of housing and commercial uses to help them attract and retain employees. And they believe this project will support the emerging medtech corridor. The Planning and Zoning Commission was made a unanimous decision to recommend approval following two hearings where the applicant responded to their questions and requests. A couple of comments I'll highlight. Commissioner Stoll said, "This project does support the bus line on Pine that the city has invested in and would provide potentially the needed ridership that line needs. And we're getting, from my viewpoint, the best of both worlds in that we're addressing the housing crunch in Meridian as well as across the valley, but we're also getting commercial space." Commissioner Rust said, "There's a ton of community value here for residents, for those that will come in and appreciate the public square and everything else that's happening here. This is very different from other multifamily projects we see. And we're not going back to the pre-COVID era of these suburban office parks and everything that happens is really is more about that lifestyle. My generation wants village-type living, working, and playing spaces, and this provides that." In all, we believe that this is a needed and desired and anticipated project for the city of Meridian. It is functional. It's ready. It's beautifully designed. It's an infill project that will bring jobs, housing, transit, and sustainability together. It reinforces Compass and Comprehensive Plan goals. And we are in support of the conditions in the staff report as described by Sonya this evening. We would ask for your approval and stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Melo Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, Council Deb, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Do you have kind of a timeline and segments that are kind of the order of the project? And I know that's like, what, you know, how's your, you know, how's your vision into the future? But at least I know that there is one there, if you could share it with us.
Yeah, we've got, I've brought some extra slides in case you had questions, including a phasing plan. So Mayor and Councilmember Roberts, the timeframe is expected to be approximately 10 years, might be 10 to 12 or other timeframe as driven by market conditions. The phasing will also be driven by market conditions, but they have thought about this for quite a while and have an expectation of the order that they intend to proceed in, and that's shown here in this phasing plan. Generally proceeding from the northeast corner and south first, and then moving over to the west side on the north. And so, and these numbers are a little hard to see here, so I can describe that a little more completely. The current, the current thought on the west side is to go to Block 4, which is the vertically-integrated in gray there, and then to the west of that where the hotel and in the turquoise there, and then up further to the west, and then move down into the southwest quadrant. So for that second phase. So that's the contemplated phasing at this time.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Councilwoman Melo Roberts.
Deb, I think is Block 4 one of the ones that's got the height variance request in it? And whichever block that's in. I'm sorry, my allergies are kicking in because we've just gone through a kind of a situation where we gave a height variance and then the added amenities on the top basically looked like another that we ended up with an even taller building than we had anticipated. So any access to like a patio or anything on the top, wanted to make sure that that was included in the heights that have been requested.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Roberts, that building in Block 4 is not subject to the height request for the conditional use permit. It is one of the buildings that is requested of the planning director, though, for a height exception because it falls within the percentage over the allowed height that is within the discretion of the planning director. So we have, that building would, is proposed at 76 feet, and that is inclusive of the amenities and all of the architectural features to address your specific question. The only building that is subject to the conditional use permit level of height exception is to the east of that on Block 2, and so further to the, closer to the central part of the site, and that's proposed at 87 feet.
And includes?
And that includes all architectural features and amenities.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, would you like a break, or do you want to keep on going through our public testimony?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Melo Roberts.
Excuse me, if we could at least do one more testimony before we take a break. I would like one of our firefighters, maybe our senior firefighter, to come up and kind of share his thoughts, if he wouldn't mind.
Should we take that through the public testimony normal process? Good, have a seat for now. We'll see if anyone signed up in advance. Just correct, anyone sign up in advance?
Mr. Mayor, yes. Charlie Anderson?
Did he say your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Charlie Anderson. My address is 2005 East Presidential Drive, Meridian. Just put my phone away, which has my little speech, so. I apologize. So where I live is directly north of Block 4, Lot 1, the vertically-integrated building in question from earlier. And I've been to multiple meetings that the developers have had along with the previous meetings here, and I want to reaffirm my support for the overall Pine 43 development, the benefits that it's going to bring to the city of Meridian. However, I would like to voice my concerns again just for that building specifically at Block 4, Lot 1, and the height of that and the relativity to those homes directly to the north. I know that was brought up by another homeowner in the previous meeting. It's been brought up by me multiple times and my neighbor as well, and I just want to ensure that that is heard with your consideration. One of the new documents that was submitted was the shadow study, which, again, worries me some because I just installed solar panels on my house, and now the, a lot of time is going to block the sun. That'll directly impact my energy usage, my cost of living, and my overall quality of life because one of the reasons I bought that home was because it faces south and the sun, I'm a sun lover. You know, this is my forever home. I had it custom-built after saving 15 years for a down payment on it. I'm a single homeowner or a single individual, you know. By no means, you know, a wealthy individual. I'm not asking to halt or derail the broader development. I understand how long that this has been in the works, but you know, given that this project is being developed in phases, I just respectfully ask DRB Investments and the council to consider the design of that mixed-use building to respect the privacy, sunlight access, and concerns of the homeowners to the north of that development. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Tammy DeVeer.
Tammy DeVeer, 2621 North Miranda Avenue. It's weird being on this side of things, but thank you for your time this evening. I'm excited to support this development. I first heard it as a citizen, and I testify tonight as a citizen. This project is ambitious. It's not another subdivision, or it's not a strip mall. It's a thoughtfully-planned, vertically-integrated, mixed-use community that really does bring the city's Comprehensive Plan to life, not just in concept, but in execution. Over my tenure with the city, it's a development that we had always hoped for. Input and feedback was sought from community, business, education, and health science leader. So we got this right prior to our application. Pine 43 reflects the city's vibrant and connected vision themes. Where walkable streets, rooftop amenities, and public plazas create a strong sense of place, our buildings are pulled up to the street, not surrounded by a sea of asphalt. Parking is integrated, sidewalks connect to open space, office, dining, and transit that already exist today. They're not a concept, they exist. This is an infill project alongside and between designated activity centers where density is encouraged, where jobs, services, transit, and infrastructure already exist. The project includes professional and medtech office space, and I think those of you know me, that is something that I've really been a proponent for and is pushed for. It's in our Comprehensive Plan, and it's what the core targets, essential to our economic future. It brings over eight acres of open space into the heart and creates a civic plaza. It offers housing that meets the needs of remote workers, professionals, and families, and not all of, it's not existing here today. It's within walking distance of the village, transit, and a future rail corridor. This isn't just a cookie-cutter development. It's complex. It's a complete neighborhood. It's a gateway to our downtown, which is essential to the vibrancy and economic feasibility of our downtown and what that we're trying to do in our downtown. It's a catalyst for quality economic development and built to stand the test of time. I want to thank you for your leadership and the vision that creates the possibility for a project to be considered like this, and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you. I think you got a hometown crowd on that one because you stopped the timer on you right before it went off, so.
Woo, woo! And that is an unusual occurrence.
I was getting ready to gavel you down, so I don't know. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
I have a quick question. This is a really fascinating project with a lot of things that have long been ideas that the city's talked about, going back when you were mayor, obviously, with some of these priorities. I'm just kind of really fascinated with how it kind of came together. You know, how did, were you able to share some of your thoughts with the applicant? You know, obviously, you had some conversations with them. Were you able to kind of work with them to help them understand some of the longer vision or the big-picture items that the city's long prioritized, going back, you know, years ago when you were mayor and kind of coming forward? Because this is a, project's obviously been years in the making in some ways. So just kind of curious kind of how things sort of came to where they are today with this really kind of interesting project and sort of your perspective with, with the applicant with that.
You know, as you probably read in the testimony, I gave it planning and zoning. I had the opportunity to participate in the city's first Comprehensive Plan when I was on planning and zoning. And to see it evolve and see the updates that we have and how we wanted, how it went from a small town into a growing city and now into an urban environment. And many of the things that we tried to put into the current Comprehensive Plan was to consider these urban elements and how we can develop for markets in the future and that would be sustainable. When I walked into their office on, at their invitation, I thought I was getting a free lunch. They wanted my input, and I was super excited because as I mentioned earlier, this is exactly what we have been hoping to see, with the buildings pulled up to the streets, with vertically-integrated, the mixture of uses in a building as well, with rooftop amenities. I would say, my, my daughter lives in South Africa, and for a number of years, she lived in one of those high-rise buildings that had high amenities, just like it is today. She's a remote worker, and it's something that I could envision her living in and maybe even keeping her here. I don't think I'll get her back now, but that's another story. This is what is responding to a lot of the need. And in fact, one of those business neighbors that we talked to had a new executive that joined us at the meeting, and she said, "I want to sign up. I just came from Chicago. This is the kind of, of home I'm looking for. You know, when is it going to be ready?" It shows you that there is a need, and in the past, one of the things that our staff and leaders grappled with is in order for our citizens or those that worked in our community, 8 to 5, they had to go to another community to find it. This will close that circle and allow those kind of opportunities here in Meridian so we can keep our citizens here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's everyone that marked they wanted to speak.
Okay. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony at this time?
Good evening.
My name is Ian Tompkins, and I live at 1018 North Webb Way, Apartment B105. That is the apartment complex directly north of State from Block 2. And before I continue on, I would like to thank the firefighters who are here for their service so far and for as long as they decide to stay firefighters. I am here to continue on my support fully for this project as it currently, at current requests from the applicant. Meridian is, and the valley as a whole, is in bad need of additional residential, especially when it comes to apartment-level residential of the studio, single, and double-bedroom variety. Currently, the current average prices per month for apartments sit between $1,400 and $1,500 a month for a single bedroom of about 750 square feet. That is shockingly high and is almost $500 more than what it was just before the pandemic. And is at the point where, before taxes are taken out of wages, an hourly worker would need to work between $16 and $18 an hour to afford to live at that monthly cost. And that includes, and that would also include any insurance. And that includes, and that would also include insurance, car, internet, because most apartments don't include internet. Some apartments don't even include lighting, power. So that, taking all that into account, the cost of apartments has gotten to, in the valley and in Meridian, to very high levels, and anything we can do to maximize the increase to apartments is badly needed. This place, it also has great walkability. Currently, the only way to walk from the, what is currently there for Pine 43 to the southwest corner of Eagle and Fairview, where Red Robin and Krispy Kreme are, is you would need to walk along the sidewalks along Pine till you reach the intersection of Pine and Eagle, and then either walk through the Blue Cross, Blue Shield Development, or cross over, as there is no complete sidewalk on Fairview, nor is there a complete sidewalk on Hickory. So having this additional commercial within walking distance of what's currently there for Pine 43 is highly desirable. And honestly, I'm hoping that whatever additional traffic it does bring causes ACHD to reset the lighting at Pine-Eagle, as currently it is the shortest crosslight compared to its neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Hey, Ian?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ian, thanks for being here. We don't get a lot of apartment residents who come and testify, so I appreciate you being here. And so I go back to like the decisions I made when I lived in an apartment. That was a long time ago. So help me, what were the deciding factors on what made you choose the current apartment that you live in? Are you from Meridian? Did you move here from somewhere else? Help me look at a little bit inside of your psyche as to what helped to make those decisions.
So I was born and raised in the Treasure Valley. I was born in the St. Luke's Downtown, and I've lived in Meridian my entire life. I chose, what was at the time, Jasper Apartments during the pandemic of 2020, as they were newly under construction, and they were sitting on Pine, which is a direct 10-minute route to work. So it made simple sense just for driving. It's close to, it goes close driving time to nearby commercial, which made sense to me. And at the time, it was sitting, I want to say between $1,100 and maybe $1,200 at max rent per month at the time. And so while I knew rental prices had gone up from when I was in college back in '09, 2010, when I first looked for apartments before I decided I was living, I was going to Boise State and therefore could live at home, that level of increase didn't seem too bad, but the level of increase we've seen since then is shocking as year-on-year increases, and Dovetail does not allow for any increases of time beyond one year. You always renew every year. You can't do anything longer. The cheapest increase of cost per year has been $80. And unfortunately, my wage has not increased enough per year to create enough of a barrier for me to think about moving elsewhere. And that was before this. If I were to move elsewhere, it would likely be somewhere else within the Pine 43 development into one of the townhomes potentially or one of the houses nearby in order to keep walkability with the upcoming commercial that would be coming in with this.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my camera.
Thanks. I really appreciate your comments, and I really valued your perspective this evening. Thanks for sharing it with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nelson?
Can we get Mason back in here, please? I'd like him to do this for me. Should have started this when I was eight years old. Wouldn't be quite so nervous, even though I've talked to you guys plenty of times. I should also disclose, I was hired by Mayor DeVere, so I don't know if that means anything. I was there when we got our first truck that we spoke of, so I can appreciate all this. We should put that out there. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak here again. I have neglected doing this more often. I'd probably be a lot better at it, but I'm here today representing the 130-plus members of the Meridian Fire Department as the president of the union.
And your name is?
Oh.
For the record.
Right, for the record, Derek Nelson. No relation, though I know Doug. Share last name. I live at 323 West Restigue in Boise, Idaho. Now you know. I wanted to at least get up here tonight and provide you guys, if nothing else, for a little bit of perspective from the line personnel who are going to respond to emergencies in a development of this size. I agree. Everything I've heard tonight, I actually hadn't dug into some of the details. Great to see some of the things they're doing. I, having recently broken my neck, appreciate some walkability, to be able to get around when one's kind of pent up. But so seeing the development itself, the fire department doesn't have really any issues with it, I wouldn't say. I don't think line personnel would have any issues with it. But I do want to provide some perspective, and I know this is some of the stuff that we've been talking about for quite a while now. Certainly.
Stay on the microphone, please.
Sorry, what's that?
Stay on the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. It certainly relates to the ongoing levy conversation that we're having that we put in for the voters. I think, I almost feel like I want to turn this dais around and speak to them directly, because I think this is what gets us to that vote. Or this is, things like this is what gets us to that vote, is that even with where we are at today, we are still behind, and developments like this put a strain on those numbers. We are already struggling with our numbers are less than what they should be to meet the needs of this city. The city has grown so fast, and numbers have grown so fast, but our department hasn't grown to meet it. Even with the bold action that you guys took to secure the safer grant that got us to where we are today, we are still technically behind. A development of this size, and you know, and even that the multi-story going up 86 feet and that number of people being housed in a structure that big requires numbers. And for us, the math wouldn't math. It would require this entire department of our city, if an incident was there, a large-scale incident, would use all of those people, 32 of them right now, on any given day, plus a battalion chief. That would ask our neighbors then to fill in. So I guess what we're, the perspective I want to provide for you is, you know, kind of some, we have to kind of ask ourselves some questions. So if we're going to continue doing what we're doing, is like, what does that mean, you know, to our community? What does that mean to our people? If we're at a large-scale incident like this where it drains our entire city, we're then asking our neighboring cities to help us provide service to those areas we can no longer get to. We can no longer meet the needs, and we already struggle to do that. The truck, which Mayor DeVere was so instrumental in procuring for us, has a 68% response rate, meaning that it's one quarter of the, out of, for every four calls, one time there, they're not going to, they're not going to be available. The nearest engine company at Station 3 has about an 80% reliability rate. Reliability rate, it's not response rate, sorry. Meaning that, you know, out of five, you know, there's, out of five calls, there's one time they're not going to be there. So our reliability is already limited. Our numbers are already too small. So as we move forward, and I know this is a 10-year plan, but these are those things that we have to continue to talk about and continue to consider, is that numbers have to make sense. Numbers have, the math has to math. We need the people to, you know, serve the people that we have already here. I just want to provide that perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel.
Questions for me?
Questions. Councilman Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, Derek, thank you. I was just kind of reading the P&amp;Z notes, some of an exchange that Deputy Director Talby had with one of the commissioners. I guess the question I have is, talking about numbers, but what we're really talking about with a development like this is it's the complexity of what you're seeing, not so much maybe the number of people that are there. So if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the way I'm thinking about it is, I could look at a residential development of similar size, that's not going to be as challenging in terms of the technicality or the complexity of any response when I'm looking at something that's above five stories. And that's kind of why I asked the question initially, is I do recall a conversation a couple of years ago before I was on council, listening in on, you know, the higher you go, the more complex the response gets. So could you just kind of put a finer point, maybe both of you? I'd be appreciative of some perspective. Can you explain the, how the complexity of responding goes up so much once you, in a project like this or above, was it four or five stories? Just kind of trying to get a better sense of that.
Well, certainly, as you can imagine, and Chief Talby, you can jump in if you'd like, square footage is just people. So if you put a whole bunch of square footage, it takes that many more people to provide, you know, aid, just that initial response. We've got search, we have to think about, you know, how are we hitting all of our benchmarks, you know, within there? So whether you go, you know, just sheer square footage, like if it's a million-square-foot, you know, warehouse facility, or it's, you know, a multi-level, multi-family, we just need people to meet the square footage. Then you add in a human component. If there's people living there, that's a whole different from a rescue, you know, perspective, and that just requires people. People require people. Square footage requires people.
You have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Taylor, just going back, and I do apologize, I didn't elaborate much on your earlier question. However, it wasn't necessarily looking, the height is obviously a considering factor, but the overall scope, size, and the use of the property. So again, if we had a mid- or high-rise office building, those individuals, they leave at the end of the day, and where these individuals are, you know, they're sleeping, so they're not alert, they're not oriented, and so our response capabilities to that property would, obviously, the initial assignment, and then we'd have evacuation, and we'd have our operational, and then that's just showing up on the initial response. So if there is actually a working incident, to get this amount of people down stairwells and into certain areas and provide fire and EMS support is just a different complexity.
Mr. Mayor, quick follow-up.
Councilman Taylor.
So really, if, I'm putting words in your mouth, but tell me if I'm right or wrong. It is more complex. There's more challenges, as you highlighted. More people, it's a manageable challenge, but it's a people-on-people sort of response. Like, you're concerned that you don't currently have the staffing levels to respond to a high-capacity, like, incident here with the current numbers that we have. Is that an accurate reflection of what you're?
Yeah, that's inaccurate. Certainly, we haven't, you know, the explosion and the rate at which we've grown, we don't have, yeah, straight up numbers of people. We don't have even, you know, a standard written, you know, guidelines on how to handle something that big. So I mean, we're still struggling to catch up as it is. I mean, Luke, you know, you were, excuse me, Councilman Cavanagh, joined us at our most recent union meeting in which we, one of those questions that was directed right at you was like, where do you think we are realistically as a city, and you were like, or a department that is, and you said about three years behind, you know? And so here we're talking about, yes, this is 10 years out, but so this is things we need to be thinking about if we're going to grow, continue to grow like this, is that make sure it's, you know, across-the-board departments as well to meet that need.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Derek, or for either one of you, to assist in it in a unit this large, I mean, obviously all the units are sprinkled, but is there also a requirement on the two tallest buildings that a, is I think it's called a FAR system is installed? Is that required on these two in this application?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Overton, based on the scope of what I've seen proposed, FARs would be required. Again, that's just conceptually, from what I've looked at so far, in addition to the other fire protection systems that would be required for this type of building.
Would you elaborate for everyone that doesn't know what FARs is, real quick?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Overton. So FARs is the firefighter air replenishment systems that was adopted by ordinance, by city council, that's currently in an appendix to our 2018 IFC, and there are certain restrictions when buildings are built, more than five stories, square footage requirements, or so many store, any level below grade. And that's essentially what that system provides as capabilities for our firefighters. When we go into rehab during firefighting operations, if we don't have an air resource availability, we are able to connect into a system and replenish our SCBA's, our self-contained breathing apparatus, and continue our firefighting operations. So it makes things more effective and efficient for what we're doing in these larger-style buildings where we would have operations for hours, depending on what we have working.
In theory, it allows us to stay there versus exiting, coming back, recycling more people. So maybe they're, you know, those individuals are staying in the fight longer, say.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks for being here. No reason to be nervous. We're all friends and neighbors here. I just, I want to touch on something, make sure I heard right. You kind of were initially, with your initial comments, which is, right, it's not lost in us. We've got, we're asking the voters to support a public safety levy here in a few weeks, but it sounds like what I heard from you is, whether the voters support that or not, obviously, right, because not, not changing anything, we're maintaining status quo if this passes, that that your opinion is that you've got concerns about the ability for you and your colleagues to be able to support a large-scale, I mean, for lack of a better word, a disaster, something where, you know, something we hope never happens, right? We have to often wonder what if. But you would have concerns for the department to be able to respond in a effective manner? I mean, it doesn't sound like it's more of a, it's not a timing issue. It's about the ability to be effective, not just here, but across the rest of the community without mutual aid. Is that kind of what you were trying to?
I mean, I think that's, sure, yes, that is correct.
Just a quick thought.
That's my camera.
Mr. Nelson, how often does the city require or request mutual aid from our neighboring agencies? Does this happen on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, a weekly basis? Help me understand who's not in your industry.
So I mean, that's where those numbers of those reliability ratings come in. So when we have, yeah, apparatus that are not able to meet their calls at a 80%, 68%, as it is with Fire Station 1, that means another district is having to fill in behind them. Now, is that a district within the city of Meridian, or is that, you know, another agency from outside? I can't speak to the exact numbers. If we had, you know, Chief Butterfield can speak to that better, being that's his bailiwick, is those numbers, but I mean, frequently. We provide the same service to our neighboring agencies as well, but yeah, I mean, that's.
Thank you.
We are asking other agencies.
Mr. Nelson, that's where I was going to kind of touch on.
Yeah.
The role of mutual aid and how we use that here in the valley for everything. Boise just built a 22, 23-story. Did they go add a bunch more firefighters for, I don't think so. I mean, do they, if they had two fires in two of their downtown buildings, do they have enough people to staff two mutual things going on at once? Even if there's one, we're covering their flanks more than likely. This is a common occurrence in how we're set up in the Treasure Valley, the expectations. I'm not going to say we live by their standards or they live by our standards, but I don't know anybody that can sustain a large, even a two-story, three-story unit of significant breadth could be enough.
Yeah. I mean, when I started here, my first experience was the Oregon Trail Fire. I was, I think, fresh out of the academy at the time of that happen. And so, I mean, that drained the entire valley. And now, granted, we were much smaller at the time all departments were, but I mean, even as we are now, you just look around us, it's not just us that have grown. I mean, you know, our star Middleton has grown. Everyone's growing. You know, our neighbors to the west are growing. And so we're all asking a lot of, you know, our agencies, of our departments, of one another, you know, for that cooperation. I mean, worst-case scenario, yeah, there's not enough people to deal. We're going to be calling on, you know, other states as they do, you know, when they have large-scale incidents in, you know, California, whatever. They ask us for their support. So yeah, we're always going to, that's always going to be there, but it's more the perspective as in this conversations that we've been continuing to have, is that, you know, we have to still attempt to meet what we have, you know, and we're still a little, we're still behind that.
I get that.
Yeah.
The other part.
And we're looking at a 10-year project here. So like, let's be thinking 10 years from now and this is complete.
Correct. And I think the other part of that is, you know, people often will say cities are chasing the dollar, that we're trying to grow for the tax revenue. But infill actually does provide tax revenue to help, in some cases, this would actually, if the levy doesn't pass, when you, when you have additional revenue, you don't have to add more stations on the outskirts. You can put the resources more into your internal locations to provide those, whether it's a fourth person on an engine or a second engine company, and, you know, it takes away some of those costs. So sometimes infill actually helps us get to where we want to go, more so than other types of development on the edges, which just stretch the resources because of time-distance travel. I'm not, I don't know what the right answer is. It's just perspective.
Sure. Yeah, and those are the considerations that we're just asking. I mean, I think, again, if we're going to dig into numbers, whether it's a reliability rate or it's even our response times, I mean, with the added traffic, the, I mean, the very first development, we talked about it, meaning, you know, getting on and off Chindon. we talked about it, meaning, you know, getting on and off Chindon now is a hassle, you know? Eagle Road is a hassle, it slows us way down in our ability to get to, you know, emergencies in a meaningful, you know, period of time. And, you know, if people knew how long it's really taking us, it's, it's, you know, it's not great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to provide to, come on forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm Matt Baker, I'm co-owner with Dennis Baker and DRB Investments LLC, the applicant. I just thought, after Councilmember Taylor, you asked Mayor Tammy, we're kind of the personal side of the project. So I thought just really quickly, I'd give a little background. You know, Dennis, my father's been a developer in the valley since the late 60s. Really started out in West Boise, went to Southeast Boise. I was the youngest of five kids, drove my mother crazy, she got me out of the office, threw me in his office, and started doing this him since I was five. And he eventually knew, heading out towards Micron, things were going to end. So he acquired this property mainly in the early 90s. He was developing Danbury Fair subdivision, you know, across the road there on Locust Grove, in the late 80s and early 90s with Mr. Torfin behind me. And as we acquired this property, we're doing things in Eagle as well. We kind of knew we needed to get Pine Avenue, Dan, Dennis started working with Mayor DeVeard. We got Pine in, had acquired all of the property kind of from Locust Grove to Eagle Road, north up to Fairview. And as you've seen, the different applications and modifications that Sonia mentioned earlier, you know, we have Pine 43, the subdivision, phases one, two, and three. Then we've now doing the shop to Pine 43 up front, we've got five of the buildings in there now on the east side. We've started construction on the next two buildings on the west side, you see in our construction now. So three and a half years ago, we came to Dan, say, okay, Dan, 33 and a half acres left. This has become infill, when we bought it, it was suburbia. We need to figure out what's the highest and best use. That's when we got with Mayor DeVeard, we have such respect for her. We sat down with Andy Urstadt and the team, and we really started brainstorming, what can we do that's really bold and unique? At 89 now, Dennis is still there every day, he didn't come tonight, he just told Dan and I not to screw it up when he left. And essentially, we've put three, the last three and a half to four years, working with this great team behind us, to come up with a one-of-a-kind project for the valley, but especially from Meridian and the community around there. So this is something that we look at as a legacy project. This is something that if we're fortunate enough to get this entitlement, we're asking from you guys, we're probably a year, year and a half for sure, going through the design process on the first building or buildings. At that point, you get through design review, you get to construction drawings, then we bid it out. Then it's a, it's a, you know, we're three and a half, three to three and a half years from today, if we were fortunate to get this from you, we'd be three to three and a half years before either we have an occupancy permit, both for the, for the office, certainly the retail, or let alone the residential. So this is something that's going to take time to get there. But it's just really, we're really excited, we've put a lot of time and effort. We're appreciative for all of the time, the staff, everybody's come together, fire, we understand there's, this is a very big project, but it's something we're very excited, and we're going to put absolutely everything we can to make this one-of-a-kind.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Councilman Lock.
Yeah. Matt, thanks.
Yeah.
As long as we're getting personal.
Yeah.
I ride my bike up and down Pine all the time, and so I've, I've coveted your property. If, if I were to ever win the lottery, I would love to buy one of those parcels and build a compound and live there forever. I, I think it's probably the most prime real estate in the city of Meridian. So I applaud you for your vision, I applaud you for coming forward with something that truly is bold. Having said that, you've also heard tonight concerns from a neighbor who has installed solar panels. Any mitigation that you might consider there with this project?
Yeah, and we're, I appreciate that question, Councilman Lock. We spent time with Urstadt on architecture on the stair-step. So if you look at that building, and you can see as we stair-step down, then we went to the buffering of just the townhouses along that area. For the first section, I don't know if that slides up there, if they can put that up there. But, you know, we've got the sports court and that, I think, the pickleball court. Then there's about four houses in there, I think, that really have some component of impact there. On the shade study, you're, you're going to have different periods throughout the day. And I, and I understand, you know, I drive there, because as you guys, I think you know, we built our office up there against Locust Grove. We put the surgery center right across the parking lot there. As I drive that up and down all day long, you're going to see different sections at, you know, 10:00 AM, noon, 2:00 PM. So we're aware that there's going to be a component of shade, but there's going to be, you know, during winter time, that sun sets more to the northwest, it's going to be different throughout the year. So it's a factor of, to be able to create that plaza, that crown jewel, that residential area in there is just so, such a key driver to be able to make the viability of all that commercial and that crown jewel work. So what we tried to do was be able to keep the amount of residential, but stair-step down and create so that we didn't have it just looming. I think that, I think the distance between the backyard to us is about 65 feet, Dan, was it 65 or 70?
90.
90, yeah, so 90. So if you get out and you do 90 feet, we feel, we feel really comfortable that that's a really strong buffer between that neighborhood, those four or five houses, and what we're proposing there with that building. Along with the fact that I think we've, you know, if you know Dennis, he lives the landscape. I think he does it more to landscape than to actually worry about what money he makes. And he's going to tree-line that thing more than Rodney Evans could ever imagine to putting on, on a design application. I mean, he's, he's going to make this place look like nothing else. And so we'll buffer that in there so nicely that it will look as, anything you see that we've done in there, this will be to the highest level we can do. I think it was Chair, is it Chair Lorcher on the P&amp;Z? You know, she, she knew that we had built the Arbor Farms nursery and left Nampa and brought it over to Meridian off of Black Cat Franklin. And so he's got the nursery over there at Arbor Farms, and he said, please let anybody know, I'm just dying to landscape. If they want more, I'll give them more. So we're planning on making sure that's a beautiful buffer on each side, on that side of State Avenue with that building.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Matt, I always love your enthusiasm, man. It's hard to not get excited when you start talking about a project. So I, I'm always enthusiastic about Pine Avenue. I just think it's a really, really unique corridor in Meridian. And, you know, it's, it's not the same Pine Avenue it was right when we were kids.
Sure.
It's grown, our city's grown, but I'm, I'm looking at where your project's going to go. And this is going to be one of my larger concerns, is you've got both Locust Grove and Pine rated better than E right now by the, by the Highway District, with no plans for improvements in at least five years. So how do we, how do we support the transportation needs of our current residents? As well as your future residents, on kind of an intersection that's really close to being constrained already and no plans in place to improve?
Well, my personal opinion, I mean, I can get Jamie Marcosian up there, and he's really going to be able to answer that better than I can. What I can tell you, though, is that I drive that road 10, 12 times a day. State Avenue, Webb to Fairview, Webb down to Pine, Pine to Eagle. Eight in the morning, 10, noon, 2. I think now and going forward, especially with the trip capture of the multifamily, with the retail and the office, we're going to capture so much, we're, everyone's going to stay within that predominantly. And I just don't believe that you're going to have the, over the next 12 years, let's say the build-out's over 12 years, that ability to service that, I haven't hit a time yet where I've had any problem being able to navigate those roads at this time, let alone as we build that space out with the office, retail, hotel, and multifamily. So I personally just believe we've got plenty of infrastructure there to handle that, between Locust Grove, Pine, Webb, State, to Eagle.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
A follow-up. Council's been asked kind of by the Highway District, we're going to discuss this, you know, corridor prioritization. Again, I'm, I'm on that road a lot, and so if you asked me, I would say we should be prioritizing Locust Grove over Meridian Road. What's your perspective? And the Highway District was asking City Council which quarter that we should prioritize. If you don't, if you're not concerned with Locust Grove, should we be prioritizing Meridian Road then instead? Or should we be prioritizing the corridor by this potential development?
When you say prioritizing for Locust Grove, can you?
Prioritizing in terms of, it's more important for the city of Meridian, when we go to the Highway District, for what we think they need to be investing in, they're kind of looking for us to say, do you want us to prioritize Locust? Do you want us to prioritize Meridian? Now, I, I would have walked in tonight and said Locust Grove all day long. I also, again, you're a subject matter expert, and you're on those roads a lot. Would you encourage the council to also continue to prioritize Locust Grove? Or because you're concerned about the ability to capture all this traffic, should we focus on Meridian Road?
I, I mean, I would, for us, Locust Grove.
Okay.
But I still think there's room, but yes, I would say Locust Grove for sure.
I appreciate, appreciate that, man. Thanks.
Yep.
So two, two question comments-ish is, I drive that road fair, pretty frequently as well. I go to Arby's a lot. It's well-known. But I think that that intersection, at the end of the day, of Locust Grove and Pine, that, that, that's, that's when it fails. I don't see any really end of the time during the day. So I think there are some impacts that people need to really consider, because people are backing up almost to the roundabout, trying to make a left-hand turn right there onto Locust Grove. It's not so much going straight, not so much going right, but that left-hand turn. So I don't know how that impacts in the traffic, so just that. The other component that, you know, when I, since we did disclose our conversations, I, I'm hopeful that there'd be a condominium project as part of this. Is there, if the state law allows condominiums to maybe be a little bit more protected, do you see a condominium project maybe replacing some of your apartments in this project?
Yeah, we'll absolutely look at that and, and evaluate that as we, as we go forward, just depending on kind of market conditions and where we're at. But that is certainly something that we have had a lot of discussion, and we'll continue to have discussion on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So are there any else that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jamie Marcosian of Kittleson Associates, traffic engineer for the project. I'm at 101 South Capitol Boulevard in Boise, Idaho. Just wanted to come up here and offer some perspectives from a traffic, you know, traffic component. You know, this project has been before you for a long time. We've, we've been careful to adjust and identify opportunities within the work where traffic is less of an issue. And to answer Mr. Cavanagh's question, I think, from a, from an operations perspective, we've looked at, not necessarily traffic operations, so in other words, how well the traffic signal performs, or how well the roundabout performs, the levels of service on these roadways. We've looked at the amount of trips that are going to be produced by this type of a development. And through those findings, we're, we're calculating, based on nationwide data, that these trips that we're producing, while they are more and exceed the values of the 2017 approved traffic impact study, they are well within the 10% buffer of a typical daily traffic volume that may occur. And so when we think about operations onsite and within the site, we have built-out facilities. We have a five-lane roadway on Pine Avenue, we've got turn lanes, we have a nice roundabout, and we have a traffic signal that has opportunity and room for improvement in the future in terms of traffic signal timing improvements and adjustments. There are components of additional capacity, but our findings have not indicated the need for those additional capacity in relation to the ACHD standards of operations and levels of service. So I think holistically, we're taking a comprehensive look at what the impact of our development is from a trip generation perspective, and, and adding that to, you know, the capture of those trips because of the intended uses, keeping the majority of those trips onsite as opposed to, you know, making a single trip for one purpose. They're able to make one single trip for multiple purposes, thereby reducing the total number of volume that's actually moving to and through these intersections and streets.
Council, any questions? Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks for, for being up here. In the ACHD staff report, you know, it says that the proposal doesn't, the proposed development requires revisions to meet ACHD policies. Can you walk council through what those revisions are in order for you guys to meet ACHD policies? What all of that you guys are having to do?
Mr. Mayor, Council Cavanagh, I cannot off the top of my head. If I was looking at it, I could walk through it with you without problem. I know, I know the staff report grants us access and creates those, those locations for which access is approved by ACHD. We've also, you know, already, as been mentioned, have developed these roadways, such as Pine Avenue, the Webb Roundabout, and in discussions with ACHD, the additional traffic infrastructure that was requested or required by their standard would be enhanced pedestrian safety measures, which have been installed as a RFB treatment for crossings of that, of that roundabout intersection.
Councilman Cavanagh, we do have.
I plan to chat with them here in a second. I just, since he got up, I appreciate it. How many, then, one more, Mr. if I can? Because again, not a traffic engineer, right? And rely on subject manager expertise, and sometimes I challenge that subject manager expertise because I'm not smart enough to understand, right? When I, when I see on an ACHD staff report, Pine and Locust, better than E, it's not great. Right, again, I, I look at this as, as a resident, right, as a citizen, as a, as a commuter who's on that road a lot.
Sure.
And if, if I see, man, city councils have proven 900 more residential units and expanded commercial on roads that are rated better than E, somebody's going to say the city council's not paying attention to listen to our community. So help, help me understand where I'm erring, and, and why, you know, you think that this enhances our transportation network.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, the, the verbiage of better than E is challenging. I agree with you. I think when you look at the arterial classification of these roadways, though, they're, they're built and their intention is to move large volumes of traffic. They're both five lanes in nature, they have multiple lanes, east and west, and north and south, depending on the roadway that you're on, and they're classified by ACHD to capture a level of traffic volume that will fit within those lanes. Now, to improve operations, there's certain measures that we can take as transportation engineers, as local governments and agencies that have jurisdiction over the roadways. Those might include widening the roadway, which may include buying people's properties or displacing residents. It may include adding additional types of traffic control, right? Enhancing the signalization properties of that intersection, or creating, creating opportunities with the traffic signal that exists. It may include building a large-scale roundabout, which can process more vehicles and, and kind of add to that, that puzzle. So there are a few opportunities that we have in our tool belt, so to speak, of how we could get to better than D, for example, or better than C. But when you look at the functional classification of these roadways, both of them are arterial in nature, they're moving large, large volumes of vehicles, and that measure of level of service E is related to delay. No, no shadow about that, no doubt about that. You know, that is indicative of the time spent waiting at that location if you were to arrive when the light turns red and have to wait there until it turns green for you to go, right? And so that LOS E is also sort of a snapshot in time. And so when we look at the 24 hours throughout the day, you might experience that level of delay or that, that period of LOS E or, or, you know, nearing that, 15 minutes of the day, 30 minutes of the day, and it might not be all right back-to-back. And so we're taking these things into consideration, both from ACHD's perspective and from my perspective as a, as a consultant and somebody who studies this for a living. The, you know, these, these periods of time are, are small. We're looking at a holistic category of a roadway and the amount of volume that it processes or is able to process over the course of a day. And that's really the, the kind of guiding direction that the agencies are using, such as ACHD, ITD. And then that's really what we follow as traffic engineers who are consulting with folks like DB Investments and other people around the valley.
Let me just one more real quick, and I guess, this is the hard part, right? Is the, the Highway District isn't asking you to make, you know, improvements to, to Locust Grove. They're not asking to make improvements to Pine. And so I, I recognize when our roadway authorities say, and this is it, and they're not asking to fix it, you know, mitigate any of those, it's hard for you to say, well, we're going to mitigate, you know, problems. So I, I appreciate you kind of giving me a little bit more insight, and I appreciate your perspective. Thanks for being here.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Doug Hendersonbeck, General Manager of Harvey Performance Company, 1410 East Pine Avenue, just down the road. So staff did a great job of kind of summarizing our support for this project. I just want to stand up here. I just want to stand up here and add, you know, as we grow an international company, growing very quickly, this is a sort of pioneering development that we need in this area to help us bring people in. Nobody does what Harvey Performance does in Meridian, making solid carbide cutting tools. And so we have to go to larger cities to bring people into the area and attract them in here. So having these types of developments, these types of housing helps us develop and bring people into the environment. We did a study of our employees. All but five live within seven miles of the facility. And so it's super important to have people able to get to work quickly, make those short transitions to work and the overtime and things that we do. So we're really supportive of this program, having people close, having people able to get there. And I wanted to be here just to support this and make sure we can answer any questions that may be relative to Harvey Performance as a company in the Meridian area. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Andy Urstad with Urstad Architects, 310 North Fifth Street, Boise, Idaho. I'm wondering whether that break we were going to have has gone, but thank you for staying here. I just wanted to touch base quickly on the, the issue of design and fire, firewise design and safety, life safety. We live in the world of life safety. Anything we do, any building we build comes with the, with the moniker that we must be designing structures that include all of the life safety protection components. So, and we met, we met with the fire department and really appreciated it. We've done a number of rather large buildings, multifamily, mixed-in, mixed-use facilities. And as there's a concern with the fire department about the ability to staff and the ability to respond to multiple incidents, the, the thing that I think is not really being spoken about much is the fact that we're, we, like the fire department, are guided by the fire codes. We're divided, we're driven by the International Building Codes. We, we deal with NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association's Model Code, which is NFPA 13, NFPA 14, and the list goes on and on and on. But, but they have very specific design guidelines for multi-story buildings, one-story, two-story, three, you go up. We're at 15, 16 stories in some of our structures. So it's great to know that the City of Meridian has adopted codes for fire, fire air replenishment systems, particularly underground and whatnot. But all of those, all of those components become part of the design process. And so the building types, the construction types, the, the ratings, which are based on, based on how long a structure basically stays standing if, if there's a, if there's an incident. With a fully fire-sprinkled building, the design of those structures is to, is to basically preserve the structure, suppress the fire and give the fire department safety as they go in and, and manage the, the incident. So we're, we're here to just let you know that as we design these buildings, we have very much at the top of our, of our thought process what life safety is. And it's not just the residents. It's the, it's the people that are the first responders that come in. And whether it's a heart attack, a fall, a kitchen fire, the, the systems are designed for, you know, protecting life and, and making the access easier. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony on this item at this time? Seeing no one else coming forward, counsel. Would, Councilman Cavender, do you want to ask anything about ACHD? Or would you like the applicant to come forward?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm, in light of the, the comments and I need to use the restroom. So I guess I'm, I'm respectfully asking for maybe a 10 to 15-minute recess if I can.
All right, let's go ahead and take a break until nine o'clock and then we'll come back and maybe ask ACHD some questions or let the applicant come forward. So.
Thanks.
All right, well, everyone seems to be here and got quiet. So we'll go ahead and continue. Councilman Cavender, would you like to have any questions for ACHD? Would you like the applicant? Okay, Bendy, are you there?
Hi, Mayor. Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Councilman Cavender.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for sticking with us.
Councilman Cavender, let me grab your microphone.
What's up? Check, check. Okay, got it. Thanks, thanks. Mindy, can you hear me okay?
I sure can. Thank you.
Thanks for sticking with us late tonight. I guess my, my question kind of dovetails a little bit off of the, the question I was kind of asking Matt earlier, which is really about Locust Grove and Pine both being rated level of service better than E. At what point, how many, how many trip count? Or what is the threshold for when that designation of being better than E moves to F?
Mayor and Councilwoman Cavender, that's a, that's a good question. On that, I did do some math while I was sitting here. So I know that it is hard, better than E is hard, but I think this may help put it in perspective. So based on our current traffic counts, Pine Avenue is using about 56% of So, based on our current traffic counts, Pine Avenue is using about fifty-six percent of its available capacity. So, forty-four percent of that capacity is still available before we would be hitting that F threshold. And then on Locust Grove, it's currently at about sixty percent capacity. So, we're looking at about forty percent of available capacity before we would get to that F threshold. And what we use for our level of service threshold for our five-lane minor arterial, which both roadways are classified as, it'd be one thousand five hundred and forty vehicle trips per hour in the PM peak hour, and that's a little bit confusing. So, I think it's easier to talk about it in terms of the percentages.
Yeah, so, Mr. -
Councilman Cavanagh.
Quick follow-up, and so fifty-seven, fifty-six percent capacity on Pine, sixty percent-ish on Locust. Should this project be, receive its approval tonight, what does that do then to the capacity of both? Does it move Pine from fifty-six to fifty-eight? Does it move Locust from sixty to eighty percent? What are the impacts of those on the capacity of those roads?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Cavanagh, I did not do that math, but we would still be below those capacity thresholds. If we're looking at probably about a ten percent increase in each, we may go up to probably between a sixty, sixty-five, and a seventy. So, we still would have capacity based on our level of service standards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? ACH? Alright, would the applicant like to come forward to close out?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If I could use a couple of slides from our presentation to address some of the comments. I want to first address Ms. Anderson's comments about worries about the building height near her and impacts on solar for her property. You know, first, just a couple of comments. We've got, let me get to the right slides here if I could. Might be before this. Yeah. I'll walk through these solar study slides to show this. So, first of all, this building, and this was part of our discussion earlier in my response to Councilmember Roberts' questions, that this building at issue here is sixty-five feet allowed of right in this zone. We're adding eleven additional feet with the alternative compliance. And so, this isn't part of the conditional use permit, and so it's eleven additional feet to bring it to seventy-six feet. So, and this height is necessary, Matt mentioned this, to accommodate the view units for the residents. That provides significant financial support for being able to do things like underground parking and podium parking, a point that Commissioner Rust acknowledged in the P&amp;Z hearing. And it provides that diversity of housing that's very valuable to the overall development. The applicant has offered to install significant landscape screening that you can see in this perspective and rendering here to soften that appearance. The building depth there is at closest ninety feet to the closest town home and a hundred feet to the others that move further east. Most of the height of the building, because it does step up, as was mentioned already, the taller portion of the building is largely in front of the amenity, the sports park of the development, with only a selected number of town homes that are impacted. And then they're only impacted for a portion of the year with the shade. And that's, here you can see that sport court and the distance is there. And then we did the solar study in response to comments and looked at the equinoxes to just take kind of the extremes of the weather and sun conditions. And so, there's also different times of day that were studied. And so, you can see that, as staff pointed out, it's really not until you get to the winter time that you have impacts. This is the worst day of the year, so we wanted to show you that worst-case scenario. And you can tell here with different times of day, there will be sunlight on these town homes. It's only a portion of the day that there is impacted. So, the neighbor who testified has the seventh house in, when you count from the east to west. And so, just really just to the west and north of that drive there. And so, is only impacted by the ten AM darkness at the peak of winter. And so, you're not getting a lot of solar power on your solar panels during the winter anyway, but it will only be partial day in the extreme times of the winter. Maybe the more important thing to point out about this slide is that the sixty-five-foot building allowed of right, which the shade is shown in that solid line, covers the town homes in the same way. And so, the additional height we are asking for with those eleven feet does not extend further across their homes. Instead, it further extends into the sport court further or in front of the street in front of their homes. So, there isn't a difference in the impact on their homes from the extra eleven feet that's requested in the alternative compliance. Also wanted to touch on fire briefly. Andy was able to cover this from a design perspective to point out that these buildings will be sprinkled, they'll have stand pipes, they'll have all of the design requirements that are required by the International Fire Code and the Building Code. Also want to point out that these are not high-rise buildings, these are mid-rise buildings. And they are comparable to, and in some cases, less high than existing mid-rise buildings that are in your city, such as the Bree, Sensi, Shields, BVA, the ICCU, CompuNet building, and others, that all currently and will continue to receive city fire service. So, they're designed to be fire protective and they are consistent with other buildings, mid-rise buildings in the city that receive that service. As the mayor touched on, there's also a benefit of having this dense infill development. We touched on this in our presentation as well. It's a more efficient delivery of services and you are also concentrating significant property taxes here with this scale of development that will help fund those needed services. And then I just want to wrap up with some points to remind the council about why we're here, why the commission was so supportive of this. Your comprehensive plan calls for this type of development in this location. They call for residential at the density that we're providing. They call for, it calls for a mix of uses. And it calls for dense development along transit and near the city's core. And this is a great opportunity. It's been commented a number of times, Councilmember Whitlock, you noted it's a great use of that land, it's prime real estate. Your comprehensive plan calls for maximizing land. And you call for dense development in those locations because you don't have very much of that kind of land. You want to maximize the opportunities where people can take advantage of transit, as Commissioner Stoll noted the benefits of. And also to get that great quality design that the bakers have come forward with is a unique opportunity. So, we hope you'll see the benefits of this. We appreciate the support we've received and we hope we've addressed your questions and concerns. Would stand for any further questions you have.
Thank you, Deb. Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Councilman Cavanagh.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that my assumption is correct. If this is approved, this would be the mid-rise, high-rise, the largest residential unit in Meridian though, right? I think all the other buildings you cited were all commercial in nature, right?
Not the Bree, right, isn't the?
Bree's residential.
Bree is residential.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Don't see any more members of the public wanting to come forward and testify. There's no more comments, I'd like to move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
If most second to close the public hearing, is there any discussion? If not, I'm favorably by saying aye. Opposed, nay. By seven, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to start off with my comments first.
Yes, just a little closer to the mic.
You know, I can't help but remember the past in this area that we're talking about. When you grow up here and you ride a school bus around that corner of what was Locust Grove and Pine, and it was all farmers that used to get on a school bus, and they're kids. We've come a long way. And we get asked as city council to not just remember the past, but try to look into the future. And what impresses me with this is what a job has been done by this team. I mean, I don't have one person sitting in that front row. It's a team sitting in front of me that has done such a great job on this project. I live the closest to this project, my district. I drive Locust Grove and Pine almost every day. And I do that because, well, Eagle Road's also in my district, and I avoid it at all costs. With that said, the transportation part to this was what first impressed me. The collector's streets were all in. Locust Grove and Pine were already built out, as far as we know, they're going to be built out to handle the traffic. VRT runs right through the middle of where this project's going to be. And the number-one option for east-to-west travel from Caldwell-Nampa through Meridian to Boise, which has been determined by compass, will be light rail at some point in the future. And that future, when we say the term ten to fifteen years, well, it kind of resonates with kind of the same thing we're talking about here tonight. So, we're very close to where light rail would be coming through. We're already on top of where Valley Regional Transit comes through. And we're in a situation where the roadway system is already built and working well. I remember when I first heard the words from Mayor Tammy about a medical corridor, because I was having a house built right in the middle of it, and watching as things were happening around me. And although we don't use that terminology much anymore, I do, from time to time, talk about how that was still the dream of that area, to be that medical corridor. Now, with all the partners that have stood behind you and supported this project, and the fact that we have ICOM and we have another big project that could take the next thirty years, and Idaho State University bringing a campus just down the road, there's going to be a significant need for the housing, the residential, and the commercial to support all of that. I do have one area of caution. And I say this in a mixed way, it's the baseball season, we're getting ready for the World Series. And I want to say that as I stare at a group of you out there, you guys really hit for the fence. We see a lot of projects that are just residential or a commercial. And this has got so many different aspects that benefit this community. I mean, you really, really hit this out of the park. But in so doing, I need to tell you that you're competing against over six thousand multifamily in this city that have already been approved. So, you need to keep hitting it out of the park and keep building the most premier product that we can see. Because with six thousand, and most people don't know that, I had that updated for me this afternoon, that's a lot of other multifamily. Some of it approved as long ago as 2020, shovel-ready, but no shovels hitting the dirt. It makes it hard for us to plan what our community needs when we approve so many projects to see the city move forward, only to not have them take that action. So, I'm kind of depending on Mayor Tammy to hold your feet to the fire as we move forward, assuming this project is approved, to keep you on track to build this project and bring it to our city. It's a pretty amazing way to take care of a lot of infill in our city. And if you didn't do a project like this, I'm not sure what that, all that land would look like. But watching how you've developed the rest of it over the past ten to fifteen years has been pretty remarkable. But, I don't know that I need to say it, but obviously, I'll be supporting this project.
Council, any additional comments? Motions?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no more comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate Councilman Overton's comments, I share some of them. We haven't discussed a lot tonight about the various requests for height on some of these buildings. I think for me, that is the piece that I'm most concerned about. And what sits with me is a comment that was made by one of our planning commissioners. It was talking about the architectural design, which I think the applicant has addressed. Everything that they do, the design of the building is built around safety. But it's really about just the size and scope of this project and concern that our chief reinforced the Planning and Zoning Commission is really our inability to effectively staff a project like this. And I look at it like sewer, like water, right? Except for, if we heard from our water department, we weren't going to be able to provide accurate water or sewer services. We'd work with the applicant and say, hey, I need you to build a lift station, extend a line, right? Those are easier solutions. This one, I can't, I can't wrap my head around. And so, that's the piece that I'm struggling with. But I don't want to belabor the conversation if the rest of council is satisfied with the responses from the applicant and feel comfortable moving forward. And I could go on and on about the things that I like about this project, and there are many. And it's weird because this is, it's not quite an industrial area, it's not quite a residential area, it's not quite a commercial area, it's kind of a hodgepodge of all three. And I do think that the many things that the applicant is asking for, I'm supportive of, even if it's contrary to staff's recommendations. But the building height is the piece that I... And maybe it's that I'm getting old and I just, I worry more. My kids tell me I worry all the time. But I worry about our ability to respond if that thing that you hope never happens, happens. And I hold the feedback from our chief and from our local, it's the first time, I think, in twelve years the locals ever came to testify in an application. And they were, as diplomatic as Derek can be, voiced concerns and said, listen, Doug, they will respond and they will rely on other cities to cover for us. And we know that that happens more already than it should. And if I had a crystal ball as to what our staffing levels would be when this is built, that would probably calm that concern. So, that's the piece for me that I'm really hung up on. And again, I've probably said more than enough. If council's ready to move forward, I'm happy to get out of the way. But I think this is a big piece that I think requires some strong deliberation, some additional feedback from our fire department and from our planning department.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Taylor.
I think Councilman Cavanagh brings up a really good point. I, you know, some of my questioning showed I was a little bit fixated on the height and the fire response and kind of what that meant and the complexity of the challenges. Of course, as I was kind of considering the height and some of the reasons behind it, you know, a lot of it was to integrate some of the parking and to allow for a little bit more density. And so, you had an aesthetically pleasing development, you didn't have big parking lots, you had more development. And I think, to me, that... I'm okay with that, I think, in terms of the needing those, to have a little bit of a higher building to accommodate some of the design elements to make this project work. You know, as this area's kind of developed over the last few years, it's been very nice, it's been very attractive. It's brought some really nice patrons and some housing that's there. I've driven through it a few times. It's, I've been, I've liked what I've seen, I think it's been a really nice addition. And, you know, I'm still a little bit unsettled about some of the response and the fact that some of the comments that I read in the P&amp;Z and here in the locals talked about it a little bit. It does make me pause a little bit more than I typically do on a project like this. But I've yet to see an incident in the valley that hasn't been adequately responded to. And it may, while the city of Meridian may not have the ability to respond to all of these things if there's an incident, surely Eagle, Boise, all these other, we all come and, you know, I don't doubt the ability for the collective valley to respond to major crises if that's the case. So, that's what- So that's what helps me overcome some of the concerns I do have that were raised with the fire department. I am a little bit more unsettled with this project than I have been with many other projects. I used, I really like what we're seeing here. So valid concerns, I think I don't need to discuss it anymore myself personally, but would be open to that if the rest of council wanted to take another shot at that. But I think I would be supportive of this application tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, council, I think that, I mean, height was obviously, I've brought it up so many times, was obviously a concern that I had. We've had issues with it recently about getting clarification about the height is the height. It's not going to have something on top that makes it even taller. And obviously with fire, it's been a concern. So I was very pleasantly surprised to hear that the architect had sat down with fire and had had these discussions about making it safe. And so I know that that's definitely the intent, and I'm familiar with Andy's work. And so very pleased to know, not only is he the architect, but went the extra mile to make sure that safety within his power, I guarantee that everything is done. And so that was a really pleasant surprise for me. So I had come kind of in with the intent of can we make these buildings a little shorter? But with all that we've heard tonight, I'm good with the project moving forward and we'll be supporting it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Little.
I'll just piggyback on the comments that you had made as well. I think this is a high-value project, and it will generate tax revenue. It will be good for the city, I think it's high-quality. In fact, I might move there, except I would be in Councilman Overton's district. I'm ready to proceed tonight, I know that there are some concerns, but, you know, not too far from this location, we've got the Sensi Building, and not too far from that, we've got St. Luke's. And if something went terribly wrong at either of those facilities, we'd have the same kind of concerns that we're talking about tonight. So I don't know that you can discount anything from ever happening, but at the same time, I think we need to press forward and rely on the fact that the design has incorporated all the best standards and that we'll move forward in a safe and efficient manner. So I'm ready to move forward tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Then maybe one quick request for whoever makes the motion. There have been some kind of specific requests from staff, particularly related to some of the director discretion. So I'm not going to be supporting the motion, and so I won't be making that motion, but I would encourage just to provide a very clean, very clear motion that touches on a lot of the feedback that we heard from staff. And I know Sonya and Bill will keep us accountable if we miss something, but just wanted to make sure that we're probably as much clarity as to what council's intending on this particular motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
To Council President Cavanagh, I did go over that with staff ahead of time. If there's no further comments, I'd like to move forward after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, and removing condition three F. I move to approve file number H-2024-0071 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of October 1, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the item, is there a discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Cavanagh.
No.
Little Roberts.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Whitlock.
Aye.
Four ayes, one nay, and the item is agreed to. Did the math right, thank you. Yes, so congratulations. Look forward to seeing what you are able to bring forward to the city to make that vision a reality. Council, anything on our future meeting topics or our motion to adjourn?
Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move adjourn the meeting.